Okay.
I don't.
This thing.
Thank you.
All right. Nice organized.
Yeah.
Just sorry, is anybody online? Guys, we had some delays. Thank you for your patience. We're almost ready.
Are you in?
Waiting for.
Champagny also had Robin Steiner to the panel to be.
Okay. All right, I will call us to order. Now avoid using the gavel as much as possible. Welcome. It's lovely to have such a large crowd here. This is such a treat. We're very excited. So we'll start off with agenda review. Does anyone on board need to review anything or change any ordering? I will add that we may have need of a motion, I mentioned this, to board members. If we want to take a position on the presentation at the end of the meeting, so we may want to have that. Okay, so just a heads up on that in our business requiring action. Yeah.
And separately, no related, possibly appoint someone to represent the board at future select board or public meetings in terms of comment. What can I go?
Absolutely. Good point. Thank you. Okay. Um, anything else? Okay, moving on to public. So at this time, public may address the board on any matter not already on the agenda and you could have three minutes. So if there's anyone in the public who would like to speak on something not already on the agenda, we would invite you to come up now.
Anyone on Zoom who's still here to raise your electronic hand and we'll see you.
No, no takers. Okay, we will move on to our presentation from Robert Hausman, who's here from the Tannover Town Manager and yeah, take it away. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me. A brief introduction to Rob Hausman. I don't want to say that I'm the reluctant town manager, but I assume the role in October of last year after a change in leadership. I've worked for the town for approximately nine years. Mostly as the director of planning until October. We could, I became the interim town manager in July and then appointed full time town manager. Before we jump into the presentation, I want to point out that the select board and staff have received feedback to date. That feedback I'd like to go over so everyone knows what we've heard is that we haven't followed the process statutorily. That it's rushed, that the plan is incomplete and that the proposed sweep adversely impacts the schools in a way that is inappropriate, unfair. I think that captures the general topics and I want to put that on the table upfront. The select board has heard this and will be continuing to deliberate whether the warrant order moves forward on Monday. And when I say it hasn't followed the process, including giving notice to and seeking input from the school boards. And I own that. So thank you. So quick overview and some of you may already have seen this, but I've been asked to go through it, so I will. The tax increment finance district overview and then the South Main Street and West Wheelock. What is a tax increment finance district? It's a tool to allow for payment of infrastructure that would enable future tax base growth. So basically you sweep in a portion of development value to pay for debt service to make improvements to the town's infrastructure that would enable further growth. In the case of West Wheelock, there's some capacity limitations in the corridor for storm water and water. The sewer plant, the sewer pump station was upgraded to meet the build out analysis we did in 2015 for that corridor zoning. So that's not an issue. In addition, the development will piecemeal adversely impact the quarter, cutting up the sidewalks in chunks and putting them back in chunks. The opportunity here is to look at using some values. So let me, let me finish my explanation of the tip first. Sorry, I got ahead of myself. I'm bad. And so what, how do, how does the TIF work? It establishes a base layer, base value. That base value, if the tip were to go into effect as a, the town meeting would be the value as of April 1, 2025. So that's the base value. And then the capture value would be the net increase in value based on new development after April 1, 2025. Millions that use tips in New Hampshire and Oogies One. Lebanon has three and is considered a fourth. A fairly comprehensive tool used elsewhere in the state. The TIF boundary as proposed right now is an L-shaped boundary that runs from basically the river up Main Street, up to the Main Street intersection and down South Main Street. The TIF purpose would be to promote residential development, increased residential use in the in the near downtown and downtown for even use in and near downtown Hannibal with transit sidewalks, water sewer service areas. This pedestrian oriented neighborhood that is both part of the Appalachian Trail and a high volume vehicle gateway to the college and the Hannibal Commercial Center is to promote private and public investment that will be used to establish infrastructure and improve safety for bicycles, pedestrians and motorists and enhance the aesthetic and function of the key gateway. The TIF funded improvements in on West Wheelock, its new drainage to, to deal with the storm water and pre-treat it before discharge in the Connecticut River. New sidewalks, shared use paths and street lighting to burial utilities. New storm, uh, street trees and improved landscaping. And I'm going to jump into the, the concept here. If you were to, if you were to look at the, the concept, um, starting from the right side, moving to the left side of the screen and acknowledging that the bottom of the page is the south side of the street, the top side of the top of the page is the right side of the street. I mean, north side of the street. You'd be basically driving east on Wheelock if you were in a car or on a bicycle. The proposed right, the right of way is shown in red. The proposed improvements cross sections are shown here. Starting from the north side of the college student center of shared use at 10 feet wide. Where the sidewalk basically sits today, on-street parking, a 13 foot from center line to parking. Oops.
It's a touch.
Ah.
You gotta talk nicely to it.
A 13 foot wide from center line to parking lane, travel lane with a share row on the center line. So a share row, for those who don't know it, is a symbol that represents a bicycle where the bicycle should be. And the reason why there's a share row here is that the expectation is that high confidence cyclists won't use the shared use path, but stay in the road. I for one am a high confidence cyclist. I don't use the mop ever because one, I'm nervous that a dog on a retractable leash is going to take me out and two, I'm traveling fast and I should be on moped. So eastbound travel lane, bike lane, six foot wide with a striped safety boundary and a right turn lane. Moving to 25 West Wheelock where the construction is underway today. Again, within the right of way, shared use, 10 foot shared use path, tree buffer. No on-street parking, but a 13 foot lane with share row. I mentioned the 13 foot lane for a reason is that we need 13 feet clear of the curb at all times to maintain these roads in the winter time. That's our power. And then we get 15, we get over 15 feet here, we get 17 feet on this side with a six foot bike lane and 11 foot traveling ring and tree buffer and sidewalk. So and then moving down to the next project that's in the queue. So we have 24. And then moving down to the next project that's in the queue, so we have twenty-five under construction uh monthly, which is. I know it's been referred to as a dorm, but it's actually an apartment building to be built and owned and operated by the college. Moving down to thirty-four, thirty-seven and thirty-two forty-three, West Wheelock. That project is in the queue with expectations of permitting this summer groundbreaking as soon as January of twenty-six. I can see taking place by uh. Twenty-eight, uh, so twenty-five, twenty, thirty-seven through forty-three in the queue. There are other projects that we're, we're seeing come through in the concept phase on this quarter. So there's an opportunity to. I'm going to use the term sweep in some value to help support this. Um, is, I can skip through these cross sections if you'd like, but in general, this is the existing condition, condition that calls. Um, this is the proposed condition, so it gives you, gives you a north or east looking view. Of this road cross section. What's important here, I'll point out is the existing right of way or. Existing roadway is shown in the line under the road, so you can see how it fits. As I march through this existing condition, a proposed condition, the road shifts. To the south side significantly to accommodate and create capacity for that shared use lane.
Um, can I just make one clarifying comment that I think came out of the Monday night hearing? These are.
Concepts.
Concepts, right? So none of this has been decided upon, right? So for the purpose of our conversation, while I think it's a beautiful drawings, this is not really what the TIF piece is about, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me.
Sorry, carry on. I just wanted to make sure if people are, you know.
This is an important point.
Yeah.
These are conceptuals that were used to develop the concept of the TIF, create a cost estimate and the plan itself. The TIF is a funding mechanism. The plans and process would be developed as we march forward between now or. After town meeting, if it, if this goes to town meeting and is approved. Between that window and next town meeting, a process to formally develop and finalize plans. Uh, that how we should fund it. So this is an option. It could be a general, general uh. Fund bond or a tip or some portion of that or public private partnership plus a bond. So all of that is very, very true. So you can see how the road shifts to accommodate the shared use path, and I think it's important to not acknowledge that. They'll be close to six hundred new beds on the north side. Associated with these two projects and the shared use path acknowledges the occupants' transit modes. Bicycles, scooters and other micro mobility devices and walking and then. They're on the north side, they're not going to cross the south side and nor do we want them to necessarily. And uh, and I'll leave it.
Yeah, Rob. Yeah, so you're anticipating with this, at least with this version of the concept, six hundred more people, but not any additional parking spaces for those people?
Talking about undergrad students.
So then, then I go back to where you said it's an apartment building and not a dorm. But the intent is this is a dorm that owned for undergrads. What's the difference?
So a dorm does not have, these are self-contained uh units with kitchens, baths. Living room bedrooms like any apartment building would have. The college is choosing to build this concept as a way of diversifying its housing stock and. Attract. Third and fourth years back on the.
With that being increased in their intended population of students?
So look, I can dive into this a lot deeper if you'd like, but. I'll just mention that as you probably have witnessed. We've had several dorms come offline for rehab, renovation and expansion. The fairweathers are currently offline. Those are two hundred eighty beds that needed to be displaced. Um, when the project is done, they'll be adding beds to rebuild the buildings. Um, and the next, once the fairweathers are done, mass row comes offline. Once mass row come, is done, the chokes come offline. Uh, so you're looking at an eight to ten-year cycle before. There's new beds. In addition, they have something eight hundred plus students living off campus. That are living as far as Lebanon and uh Mount Suppory, uh, area at Juniper. Uh, so they're looking at how they meet their existing housing needs and also offer quality. Housing that may not be available off campus today.
But if I can get us back to the tip, because I don't know that any of that really impacts the tip, right?
Nope.
Okay, this, just double check.
Well, I think there was a question.
Absolutely.
So I just skipped over um. The twenty, twenty-five, you see the road shift. Um, again, it's a six-foot bike lane, eleven-foot travel lane. Eastbound thirteen foot, uh, westbound and a ten foot. Shared in its path. And. This, this is the area of forty-three, uh, thirty-seven through forty-three. This is where there's a center turn lane into Engineering Drive. Um, and. We accomplished everything by shifting the road. Keeping the road very, well, stealing land from Dartmouth. Working with Dartmouth to acquire a portion of, of, of the width necessary to accommodate everything. I shouldn't have used the word steal. We're working actively to see how this fits. So with that in mind, South Main Street, um. I'll mention that those who, who were around when the water breaks occurred, we had five water breaks in thirty-six hours. Um, we have a hundred and thirty-year-old pipe on one side of the street, a hundred and ten-year-old pipe on the other side of the street. They had to shut down all the restaurants one night at five P M. The second night we held off until eleven P M. But we have an aging infrastructure. I think it's uh. It, it speaks volumes if you walk on the sidewalk, uh, and you know that it's breaking down, it's patched, it's broken. Um, and there's some other issues that we're looking to address here, uh, in addition to the water. Uh, and sidewalks with storm grain upgrade waterline, not in the document, in the plan, but in. In the design, in the, in the forecasted estimate, this sewer upgrade also. Upgrade the underground power, which is a problem for us right now. We have some electrical issues with our underground power that feeds the lights on Main Street. Uh, and sidewalk, the concept is a sidewalk expansion. It's called an open streets plan. The open streets plan will enable the, the, the main street to actually be used for other activities like closing it. Or farmer's market or um Hallowood Fest or other programs, which. My understanding is, it predates my arrival here, but we used to close Main Street every summer for an activity. Um, and it would create the opportunity to do that. It would improve bicycle infrastructure uh and the concept. As it's been laid out, we've done three different concepts for South Main Street. Um, the concept. If you were to uh look at, this is an overview of the entire street, starting with West Wheelock intersection to the. Left and running down to just to Dorance to the. To the, to the right, um. A bike box and share row for the first section uh in both directions. Changing the parking from diagonal to parallel. Uh, widening the sidewalks so that the parklets that exist today in the street would be flipped to the building side. Uh, so you wouldn't be walking through the service area that's happening today. And the public space would be separate from the dining and it would also enable outdoor display of retail. Uh, in a way that doesn't exist today without impacting the pedestrian flow. The green areas are where the intersection, near the intersections represent designated bike lane and a bike box. And a, a light intersection so that the bikes get in front of the cars and can be controlled. Be first in the intersection when it's a red light. Um, and I say bikes, I mean. All devices, so scooters and everything else. Um, and then moving to the intersection of. Improving this crosswalk, the, the loose crosswalk, it's a funky diagonals. Uh, dumps you into a dry, a road with Allen Street on one side. Uh, and. You know, this, this shortens the crossing, improves the alignment. This shortens the crossing, improves the alignment. And addresses other safety concerns, dealing with the Lebanon Street uh intersection. Concept here really focuses on improving that intersection to a four-way, a three-legged. Not diamond shaped intersect, uh, crosswalk, um, and then making other bike improvements moving to the south. Cross sections, this, this represents dining on the inside. Uh, we use the term dining. We have four parklets now permitted, um, and we assume that the opportunity, if they had, would continue to use out. The outdoor space for the use. Again, this, this is the Allen Street area, Lebanon Street area layout, diagonal parking. Road, share row, center turn lane. Happy to, happy to dive into it any deeper. By adopting the plan, the town creates a funding mechanism. No TIF funds will be expended unless authorized by a subsequent town meeting. Without the adoption of the TIF, the town loses the option to consider improvements funded by the TIF. I do have a little more information that I can share with you specifically about. The what if? So we have two, two legs of this project. Each one has a cost estimate of fourteen million dollars right now. They both um have the opportunity to move forward with TIF funding in part or whole. Um, if we delay the creation of a TIF, is the example of twenty, uh, by one year. We lose the ability to capture uh the revenue stream that will be generated by incremental improvement. At twenty-five West Wheelock. Because the next benchmark would be twenty twenty-six, April one, twenty twenty-six. That amount would. The total amount estimated at this time, that would be um. Is about five hundred ninety-three thousand dollars in taxes that would not be eligible for the TIF.
How much is that again?
Question about that?
Yeah.
When the project is finished or when the project is in process, is the new assessment applied?
Every April one, we assess properties based on, with a, with an active building permit. The value at that's, that day.
Is that project going to be finished by April?
It'll be eighty percent, it's projected to be eighty percent complete by April. And online by September.
Yes.
So am I right that this is being driven in terms of speed by the fact that you've just got a hole in the dirt right now? That has no value.
It's partially correct. The other.
Right, because I, yeah.
I just want to get down to the basics. There's nothing there now, so it's great time to do a TIF for the town. Because there's no value to a hole. But we wait a year and it's now, there's a building there, so it diminishes. Okay, just wanted to be clear on that.
Correct. And again.
That's not the only thing though, right? And the other real time, time is the revaluation.
We have a revow anyway, and that revow.
So they will capture that also.
And how much is that?
The revow? I'm sorry.
How much do we anticipate that amount being?
Uh, so let me, let me see if I can explain it. Um. Not an assessor, but. The, the town is approximately assessed at um seventy percent or slightly below seventy percent. So on, on April one, the new market values will be applied, the mark, the. The zoning values will be applied to the whole district. At seventy percent of that value. For the district. So we will see a. An increase, I think of seventeen thousand dollars, seventeen million dollars in value. On April one at seventy percent of the assessed value.
So.
And twenty seven, and then, thank you, go ahead.
So I'm just going to offer a couple clarifications as I understand things. Sorry, they're not really questions, but clarifications. So these increases in value, right? Those are going to be happening whether the TIF is there or not, right?
Yeah.
So when you say we lose the opportunity to capture that, what we're really saying is we lose the opportunity. In the current formula, right, to cut the school taxation out of that amount, right? That's what that's really saying, right? I mean, to put it bluntly, that's what it's really saying, right?
And right, the plan, the document.
As, as right now.
As of right now, represents a seventy-five percent sweep of the net increase in of.
Right, but then the other twenty-five percent goes to the town operating budget, none to the school. Currently.
Goes to the. The pool of money is to fund. So I, I hear you. I don't have the answer for you. Uh, my, my, my understanding is if we don't sweep that twenty-five percent, it's taxable assets that can fund. The school.
Interesting, okay.
All the money that's flowing that we're talking about here. Approximately what percentage right now, most of the schools, it's ballpark, two-thirds. Fifty-six, okay, a little high. Yeah, so roughly two-thirds goes to the schools, right? Broadly speaking. If we say. As of right now, the land within the TIF is worth a hundred million. I'm probably way off, which is for roundly the numbers. So the schools would get roughly two-thirds of that assessed property tax value every year.
You would have the ability to tap that assessed value to fund the operating budget. You don't, you don't get.
Right, I'm, I'm, I'm very reasonable, obviously. Not, not a zoning person, not a bottom layer. So let's say in two years, TIF is in effect, the land is now valued at two hundred million, it's gone up with all these nice aesthetic improvements. The school would always only get sixty-seven percent of the taxation on the hundred million. But we get zero of it, of the, between one hundred and two hundred million. I know I'm simplifying it, but broadly speaking, is that would that be what happened if all goes the way you're envisioning this?
Less than twenty-five percent. And we have shared.
But do we have that in writing somewhere that would?
As I understand that the, the nuance of the plan, the sweeping seventy-five percent, at least twenty-five percent. Or used for general taxation purposes.
So at best, we would see twenty-five percent of that, well below sixty-six and potentially zero of that. Okay, so.
Yes, Tara, go ahead.
Something that you just said then, is the proposed warrant article potentially going to be edited, amended? Because right now it says that the twenty-five percent goes back to.
The general.
Town general fund, which is.
Separate from.
Separate and excludes the school.
If the warrant article goes forward, it'll be edited and reflect that.
Okay. Um, my other question is, are there some? Um, my other question is, are there some like financial numbers for us to digest? About the total assessed value of the current two streets. Um, the proposed or the projected increase over time. You know, this April one versus next April one, and what the reflected revenue impacts are. To, to those changes and the reapportioning of the tip funds.
I have not, I can't answer all of those.
Okay.
But I will strive to give the answer to it.
Okay. Cause the things that I was looking for basically were the sort of an updated current general cost estimate of the conceptual project. And it sounds like it's fourteen million, but I just wanted to confirm that that was a current update. Because my understanding is that some of the original data in the study is quite old at this point, like five or six years old. So I wanted to know what the current cost of the, what the budget was for this project. And then how the current tax rate would be impacted. Because we're assuming, I was based upon the way that the warrant article was written, that some of the funds will be, um. That will be funding the project will be tip funds, and then there's a possibility of a bond. Um, so I'm trying to understand like what would that bond look like? What's the estimate on the bond? How would that affect, affect the tax rate? Um, and then trying just to understand with the movement of the money from the tip, the reapportionment of those funds, those revenues. How would that impact the school funding? Um, because my concern is not the improvement at all. My concern is the townwide reassessment, because right now the estimate from the, only have been floating. And so I'm not the expert in this, but what I heard was concerning. Because the current estimate of the town assessment average townwide. Is seventy percent of market value. The goal is always a hundred percent of market value. So when we go through this process in the summer, which I just heard about, that, that will be moved to a hundred percent, the whole town, townwide. Usually revenues stay the same, so you get a similar bill, so some properties will be adjusted.
Lower rates.
Higher, slightly lower, but pretty much on par, the amount of revenues coming in, it's just the, who pays for what percentage? Changes, changes a little bit through the process. So right now, as it was written at the plan that I saw at the CIPC meeting on Friday. The school will be kept home for part of this district at forty-one million, the part of the district that's expected to increase the most. Which is the West Wheelock quarter. We will be kept at a base of forty-one million dollars of assessed value for that quarter, was what was written in the plan. And then there is, um, an anticipated almost immediate increase in valuation of that property by seventeen million dollars. Which is to do the townwide reassessment. The problem is, right now, we receive as a school, one dollar of seventy percent of the value. Now the value is going to be moved to a hundred percent value, we will receive seventy cents.
Mm-hmm.
Because our base is the forty-one million of the seventy percent of market value. As soon as it goes to a hundred percent, we're only getting seventy cents on the dollar for our normal operational budget. So my question in all of this is, how are we going to overcome that gap? Because we're not decreasing, I can't imagine we're contemplating decreasing the school budget by thirty percent.
Mm-hmm.
Or some fraction of a percent to reflect just that valuation of Main Creek and West Wheelock. Which happens to be some of the most expensive property in town.
Right.
So I'm not sure yet how that impacts us.
Certainly not the already approved budget, right? Like that's.
Doesn't, doesn't.
That would need to be funded though.
Right.
Actually, but taxation.
Those, those are my concerns, I was hoping this season.
Yes, agreed, um, if I may just add on to that, I think one of the big sort of philosophical questions to me. I agree with Tara, I want a functioning sewer system, I want a functioning water main. I want sidewalks that are safe for strollers and wheelchairs and people who need to walk, right? Like I want all those things, absolutely hundred percent will support spending that money for those important projects. What I don't understand is why this is the way to fund it, right? Um, and, and I know, um, this was said at the meeting on Monday as well, right? From a communication standpoint, if the town decides to take out a bond. To fund these critical important projects that I have every confidence the town will agree with me on are important. And we want to fund those things, right? Then we say, okay, our town operating taxation is going up, our, our taxation for the town budget is going up. Because we're doing these important projects, guys, that's the communication, really clear message, right? If we go this TIF route and we do these improvements that we all agree are important, they're funding themselves, right? But the school budget and the school taxation is going through the roof. Why? Because the town's doing improvements and that doesn't make sense, right? That's really hard, so what are, what are our options? We need to redo our roofs, right? We also have fundamental structural things that have to happen, right? And what are our options? Our options are to not do those critical infrastructure projects that we need to do. Or to cut our programming to kids so that that piece of the taxation is not going up in a completely illogical way. So it just feels like it forces the hand of the school district. Which I will add is one of the main reasons people choose to live here in the first place, right? So the whole thing just seems like it's not the most logical way to fund what we all agree are critical projects. So that would be, I guess, again, not a very good question, but I don't know if you have an answer to that. As like, why is this the way to fund this project? And, and you could say, I don't know, well, you don't know, okay.
I, I don't.
That would be feedback, right?
I, I've heard what you've asked.
Yeah.
I can't answer the question directly.
Yeah.
Um, what I can do is say that a fourteen million dollar bond is a one point two million dollar bond payment. Uh, or a ten percent increase on the tax rate of the town. So two fourteen million dollar bonds is a twenty percent increase on the tax rate of the town. And as a resident of Hanover, and someone who collects, it was the town government collects the taxes and pays the school. I can tell you that the average citizen doesn't look at their bill and say, I'm not gonna pay the town's portion or the school's portion. They look at the bottom line, and that's what they focus on. Uh, and the bottom line should be a huge impact that would potentially impact. The ability to fund projects both for the school and for the. I mean, the increase is the increase, it impacts the bottom dollar that people are writing a check for.
I hear you, I, I would just push back, and again, this I think is feedback for you to take back to the select board. I, I think my concern is that when people go to vote on the school budget, that's not always necessarily the case, right? When we, and we do our best job to communicate, um, increases that are out of our control, right? This, our operating costs are only going up by one point two percent, but these outside factors, and we have many of them. That are gonna be coming down on us, right? We don't know how federal funding is gonna impact our budgets, we don't know how state funding, right? They chose to short fund, um, special education costs this year. That was an unexpected thing, right? Um, we don't know how any of that's gonna impact it, we don't know how the voucher plans that are floating around the state are gonna impact our budgets. Right, so there's a lot that we can't control, to have the town putting something else that we can't control on it. That could have a wild swing i- is concerning. So I, I will say too, I just wanted to say, I appreciate that you started off by saying, we acknowledge, we've heard these things. And that's not always easy to do, so I appreciate you starting off that, but, sorry, I've talked a lot, guys.
I, I have a question that, um. I, I ditto everything Kelly said about the needed infrastructure improvement, et cetera. And an additional question I have is the end of the tip. Because I've not seen an end.
Yep.
And is this forever and ever amen? We don't get any chance to go back in there, what's the end of it?
The structure here is designed to pay down the debt for the improvements, and then it ends. The bond that I mentioned is a twenty-year lifespan.
So for twenty years, it'll, we'll be stuck at the same place as.
I ran this, I, I did run this as a fixed principal, bond analysis. Payment, and it decreases, um, by about a hundred thousand every year. On the, the annual payment, so over the life of the bond. It decreases down to the final payment of seven hundred, uh, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand.
But that, that date is definitely not in the current article language.
No.
Right? Which is concerning, which is concerning.
We need it to affect until the town determines.
Right, so when the town decides, we want to share this revenue.
Well, it's how the bond is paid off, or the, the, the TIF is terminated because it has no perks.
Hmm, right.
I, I understand your concern.
Yeah, a date would be, I think.
We want an end.
Yeah, and then date would, would at least alleviate some concerns.
And I hear you.
Yeah, thank you.
So, I appreciate coming here tonight, thank you for what you were. So this is actually not a surprise to you, maybe it's for some folks in the audience, but, um.
Welcome.
And you know that there were some challenges that some of us brought up in, as individuals at the Monday select board meeting. I appreciate you said that, we acknowledge that, however, that still doesn't answer it or solve it. Well, we pointed out to you, you guys are not following the law right now in terms of how and doing that you're doing this in terms of notification and all that stuff. The reason school boards are mentioned for notification in the law is that these concerns are very valid. Cause it impacts our financial wellbeing for decades to come, decades. And I appreciate saying, we hear you, but that's not saying like, I've heard you, and because of these concerns, we are slowing it down. We are addressing these changes, we're gonna not present a town meeting in a matter of weeks.
I am not the select board.
Why is the select board not here?
I, I can.
Probably something else he can't answer.
I can, I can, I can say that two of them are out of town, and if I have three present, it's a quorum.
Yeah.
Uh, we could then give notice.
Yes, and that is, I know, so as to be opposed to me, that is not happening, I see one of your members is online, hi Jamie. But that is not the same thing.
I.
You are in a rock, you're between a rock and a hard place, I get that, Jay is often in the same position, hi Jay. But that does not negate that this issue is still here and still remains, and as of now, the select board seems to be moving on forward. When you're gonna get a lot of negativity here, hopefully, but maybe we will bring this negativity to the town meeting. And like someone else mentioned at Monday's select board meeting, do this right slowly, get the stakeholder buy-in. Rather than have it crash and burn publicly at town, town meeting in three weeks and change. I want us to go slowly and get build buy-in and build a contractual support, so we're all on board with this. In whatever way it ends up becoming, rather than us batting, batting, butting heads, when I don't think we should have to.
Mm-hmm, right.
Thank you, I'll leave it.
Uh, Tara.
I'm just gonna say to the board, and probably we can also somehow communicate this to the, the select board as well. RSA that's involved with this particular presentation, one sixty-two dash K, states in section three.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that the governing body, which I believe probably will rob your, your.
Representatives the government.
Right. Shall fully inform the county commissioners and the school boards of the fiscal and economic implications of this proposed development district. And we are still awaiting that.
The numbers, yeah.
That's the data that we need for this.
To be informed.
To be, yeah, exactly, for, for this to be fully processed, you know, for. If you came to us and you said, listen, we don't want to impact the operational budget of the schools. I would propose, or the select board might propose, that we keep the base value of the property on both quarters. To be a hundred percent of tax assessment for purposes of funding the school. I would be less concerned right now, because you would be reassuring us that our funding mechanism would remain intact. And then, then you would be able to fully say, without qualification, that all you are capturing is the incremental improvements. But right now, what this tip does is capture thirty percent of the underlying base value, as well as incremental improvements. And that's why I want to see the numbers and want to be able to analyze with the board, how we deal with that kind of budget map.
Okay, yeah, um, and, and I will just also say, and then I just wish I opened it up to public comment as well. Um, you know, the other thing that was brought up, and again, I know Rob, you've heard this, so this is not for you or for the viewing public. Um, the other thing that was brought up on Monday, um, is that there's not currently a bond out. There is not currently debt that has been taken on for this project, so. It, it, this money that's gonna be captured, it's unclear, other than coming out of the base value for the school taxation. Where that money would sit, and I don't know if we have an answer to that yet, but it, does it sit in a car or does it sit in a bank? Does it, what happens to that money until this project begins, until this project starts spending that down? So, um, there are a lot of those unanswered questions as well, um. I think, yes, then last comment.
I, I have one more. I'll report Rob over here. Oh, so for the public to know, Rob has already agreed to come to the Dresden meeting, which is the middle school and the high school on the twenty-second. As the select board is legally obligated to do, as it is another school district within the town. Um, so, thank you for that, Rob. So he's gonna do this again, folks, for any, for any bigger minds. Um, that said, Rob, you brought up by your own admission at the Monday meeting, I, I'm paraphrasing here, but you said basically, we did the TIF. Incorrectly or illegally or something like that for the parking garage, do you remember saying that?
As it relates to establishing the committee and managing the annual report that's due by statute. So we're supposed to have a, a committee for the duration of the TIF.
Mm-hmm.
That ensures that the TIF process is followed. And it's not being followed right now for the proposed existing TIF, but the most projects once funded. I will acknowledge that in the state of New Hampshire, you did your own research, you would see that a lot of the towns. Committee sort of laps, because there's not much to do once the project is built.
But, just because someone else is doing it, you know, it's not.
We currently are non-compliant with that requirement.
But it just, it brings me to a point, like if they're, if we're being openly not compliant with the current TIF, which is decades old, as I recall, right? At least it's going to be decades old by the time it's done.
Nineteen ninety-eight.
Nineteen ninety-eight, so.
Almost.
Multiple decades already.
Yeah.
It'll expire in two thousand.
That leaves me greatly concerned, in addition to all the other stuff we're having right now, the town is normally do, doing something bad. At least against statute, is continuing to do so, and is making similar mistakes, again, with the current proposed TIF. What am I supposed to think, both as a school board member, but also as a taxpayer? And the town that is so focused on education is like a core part of our identity from K to post-grad. We should be celebrating our focus on education and not giving even the perception, let alone the financial reality. It feels like the school might be, schools might be getting cut off at the knees here, when what we want to do is make it stronger and stronger. We know from our internal surveys in the schools, that the schools or the perceived quality of the schools are the main reason our parents come here. Or then it's sixty, seventy percent going by memory.
Mm-hmm.
And ninety-plus percent say it's one of the main reasons they come here. So why would we not want our schools to capture this available tax and to keep our going better and better and better? I'm not expecting an answer from you, but I am kind of confused why we're not hearing. Yes, we appreciate our schools, we know our schools are awesome, why people are coming here, and this is why we want to help you guys, cause that's not what I'm hearing.
We're working partnership.
Yeah, we wanna work in partnership, yeah.
Okay, so I would like to open it up to public this time, yeah, Kim, so, three minutes. Start with that.
And also guys, if you want to come speak, if you want to say, I agree, I disagree, just leave it at that, that's perfectly fine too.
Right, so try for three minutes, keep, please say your name and where do you live.
And if you're understanding, if you're presenting a particular.
I'm a department member of the public, former school board member as of nine days ago, and was on the CIPC, um, for this. Type of very quick discussion, um, so, and I'm happy to also answer any questions. But I, I spoke quite a bit at the Hanover select board meeting on Monday. I'm not gonna repeat those comments, and I appreciate that it sounds like they've been heard and actually have, are interested in changing some of the language in Article Ten. Cause actually the answers that were presented is actually opposite of what today is opposite of what I was hearing that. And I heard it was the general fund goes back to the town, a hundred percent to the town and none to the schools. If general fund is more open to all possible county, it's also county too, it's not just the school districts, right, are getting it, would get cut out of this. But actually, what I'd like to talk about today is just, um, actually to give a little bit of background. But actually, what I'd like to talk about today is just, um, actually to give a little bit of background, right? So, um, my my professional background, I started investment banking, um, and then I worked for a. A Gabby, one of the USAID donors, working with the World Bank to, um, basically do government financing. Um, and so we had the motto of more health for the money, um, more money for health. And so I literally was on a team called the Innovative Finance Team. Um, we looked at different options and creative ways to solve problems. And the TIF is not the right tool for this problem. And so I just, to answer the question, you know, why, why are we considering a TIF? I don't know. This, this is not financial alchemy. TIPS don't create any additional revenue. It's just reallocating the pieces. It's just squeezing the balloon in a different spot. And in this case, the school districts and the county would be squeezed out of it and we would have a larger tax rate because of it. And if somebody asks, why did the schools have an increase in their tax rate by X percent, which is commonly reported? And former board members got asked to be interviewed by the Valley News, why does it increase, right? The answer the school districts would have to say is because the town did a project. If they just did a traditional, at thirty million, whatever, traditional bond financing. It would come out in the normal course of business and they say, why is the town tax rate increasing? If it's a one point two million dollar bond payment, guess what? Dresden School District. Just this past year had one point two million dollars roll off in our debt and we, we went to the, to the, um, public body. Twenty years ago and said, we need to build Richmond Middle School. This is why. We didn't say, we're going to carve out Boardwalk and Park Place and Occam Pond to fund Richmond Middle School. Because we think, ooh, it might be a lot of money, we're scared. The point of a TIF, just want to say, is. Actually not for Park Place and Boardwalk, right? It is for Baltic Avenue. It is for those brownfields. It is for things that but for a government interaction intervention. That there wouldn't be additional taxable revenue and then it really would be accretive. Capturing or latching on to a time period when a zoning change that happened a couple of years ago. Has kicked off a tremendous growth in West Wheelock. Fantastic. Has nothing to do with making the sidewalks. You know, better. Not saying that the sidewalks won't be fixed, that's town business. And actually, I don't think the school board should even really consider the project. Because that's, I don't think in the realm of what the school district should think of. The school district should think of is, how is it funding it? And a TIP means that the school district would, in a sense, be funding this project. Because the town would be whole, although now it sounds like they're maybe they're open to revenue sharing, which they haven't before. But I just want to clarify that TIPS are for Baltic Avenue, Mediterranean. They are for those lower value areas. That but for any sort of interaction, uh, government intervention for the project. And those tend to be a little bit dicier from a public perspective. You do it for something that's a little bit, you're not sure if your public's gonna want to do it. Right? Because you want to clean up an area so that another, you know, hopefully maybe a commercial building would be developed in there. So, um, we've also talked about the parking garage, right, that hasn't been really successfully managed. Um, you know, those are very different projects, and I know I'm probably over three minutes. I appreciate.
Very about three minutes, yes.
You're, 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 I totally get it. Um, you can cut me off at any time. But, you know, I just, just want to say that, you know, we need, the parking garage tip. At the time of the warrant article, it had an, it had mechanisms for an end date. It was discussed on what the project was. The bond was just, was asked for by the public at the exact same time. They didn't make the fence and then say, well, we'll think about building it later. There are other alternative financing options that the, that the town can do. You don't have to have a TIP to plan a project. You can put it in the general fund right now. You can, you can, you can do other things, right? You can present to the CIPC, which was not done until after the CIPC had already completed the, it's the long-term capital plan for the town. Then this was kind of filed after that whole course of business. So there are different mechanisms, different ways that funding could be raised. That the conversation happened with the town and, um, I just really don't think that the schools. Should be funding a town project in this manner.
Thanks. Thank you. Other members of the public. Yeah, Kari.
The Kari Asmus of Etna, um, School Board Emerda, Finance Committee Emerda. Uh, however, I am currently also, uh, uh, CIPC, which is, uh. Capital Improvements Program Committee as well as trustee of the trust funds. Um, so, um, I have three points that I I would like to make, you know. One is that if you read some of the articles that are going around or listening to some of the presentations, it says that the. That nobody is taking anything away from anybody. And what they mean by that is that this, you know, you will have the same tax base that you had all along. What it, what you're missing out on though is the future revenue stream. And I think that most people here understand that, but that's a good way of explaining it to the public. And you say, well, why is that the problem? Well, the problem is in part that, um, this project, if it's successful. Will take Dartmouth students out of single-family home rentals. And hopefully those homes will be filled by families and we'll see the school age population go up. We also, as you know, sometimes when you have, uh, apartments, as we maybe will see on the south side. Families from nearby communities rent them to avoid paying, uh, tuition at Dresden. We can hope that at the race school, you can add some students with minimal marginal costs, but we know that because of the contact. That every student that's, uh, from Hanover that's added to Dresden adds twenty-five thousand dollars or so. To the taxes in Hanover, which is one cent per South thousand. So it's not a s- a small increment. Um, the other thing that then you hear is, well, yeah, maybe you don't get this future revenue stream. But you haven't gotten it already, so you don't, you won't miss it. You're not accustomed to it. And what I can say is that, having gone through maybe like seventy budgets between all those things. There's never been a budget where somebody didn't say, hey, does anybody know what's going to happen with the net assessed valuation? Are we going to get a little bit of a bump up? You know that it's not going to help a lot, but you need every little bit that helps. It's like being on social security and saying that somebody is going to be minimizing your COLO. You know, you, you can, you need that amount. I guess the third thing that I would like to say is that. You know, a lot of this is very hard to know. What is the increment going to be? But if they're talking about a twenty-eight million dollar bond and, you know, they're probably talking about, you know, at least. Two million dollars at the start for an annual debt payment. And if you know that, uh, sixteen, sixty-six, seventy percent of that is coming. From lost foregone revenues from the schools, that's, you know, over a million dollars, that's one point two, one point three million. And that's for many years. So, you know, times it out. Um, and so it is a significant foregone revenue, even if you end up doing a, you know. Seventy-five percent sweep, fifty percent sweep, that money still needs to be paid in, um. In in debt service. So I really think that. Um, it would make, if I were in your shoes, I would say, yes, you know, we don't care about parallel parking or diagonal parking. And, you know, if the town wants to earmark funds, you know, go for it, you know, that's not a school board issue. But, you know, if they can't keep the school funding poll. Then I think you need to tell the people of Hanover, if this goes to town meeting, that they need to go to town meeting and vote down.
Thank you, Kari. Any other members in the public? Yes?
I'll just check them down there.
Yes, please.
Name your town if you're representing a particular group.
All right, I'll keep it short because I know we're already way over. Um, Joe, uh, resident of Hanover, prepared. Uh, students here, we need your last name too. Oh, Joe Blas, sorry. Um, so the first, uh, comment was, TIPS are flexible. There's prior art where they can actually change them to make the language make a budget shortfalls for schools. So has anything like that been considered? And who are the primary beneficiaries of this? It seems like Dartmouth is making out like a bandit. What are they doing to fund this when something similar happened in Killington? They actually pledged millions of dollars toward the bond. Like, what is Dartmouth or any of the other people in the area doing?
That was short. Thank you, Joe. He's an advertiser.
You, are you looking for me to respond?
If you have a response, if not, you can, you can just log it as.
The select board last, uh, is considering adjusting that house to see if. The sweep can eat the school district hall and still have a function TIP. Uh, or a portion of the, uh, the project funded by the TIP. Uh, with regards to Dartmouth College, um, every single unit that has a bed in it is taxable. Um, the two projects I mentioned will generate, uh. Acknowledging what's been said so far and.
Yes, what is that revenue that it will generate?
About a hundred seventeen million in tax. I mean, a hundred seventeen million in assessed value, uh, one point seven million. The second part of the quote, so did I, that was the first part? The second part is what, what have, what are the private sector pledges? We are in the process of trying to dial that out because I'll use the term stainless steel versus platinum. Uh, the town is going to fund a stainless steel project. If there's a desire to go to something else, then that difference really to come from the interested parties. Um, and we haven't crunched those numbers yet.
Ken, anyone else? Any other members of the public? Anyone online?
Raise your hand if you wish to speak.
Ben wants the chair and so it's a fair reason. Well, so, so I, I, I won't be there, as maybe others won't be there on Monday because it's school vacation week. And that's when the last hearing is for the select board, so that I feel like this is my little last hurrah. Uh, but just wanting to, to highlight, which has not been highlighted tonight, is that this is not all just Dartmouth student housing. Um, actually, it was said multiple times in select board meetings that this is for other resident housing. Um, particularly on the south side of West Wheelock. Other residents, um, often includes old age children and in Dresden, we pay per pupil. So, half of the students that would be of school age would be at a cost to the school district to Hanover. Specifically, Hanover taxpayers at twenty-five thousand dollars per pupil. So when we ask how many beds are being considered, which I've heard of actually other projects. They're not, just starting with college, there are private investors who have, um, permits pending that I believe is somewhere in the ninety-nine beds. Potential proposal and others. So, so there, there are others that are being considered and other options and for the zoning, there can be. Um, and Dartmouth even has projects that they're considering for the south side to be workforce housing. So this is not just what I feel like has been presented today is these are just student housing, which you is definitely replacement, right? So, right, currently Dartmouth students live in single-family houses, which would probably be filled, um, seventy percent of single-family houses have students, have. Have, um, children who are K through twelve.
Yeah.
Um, so there's, of course, the replacement valley, but then you also have your multi-family, which is around that twenty, twenty-five percent of those units have school-aged children living in them. With not one, then two, and if it's two, then it's fifty thousand dollars. That would be an actual cost to the residents of the school district. So, just wanted to highlight that as well, so it's not just asset value, but it actually would be real cost to the. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, last chance, public. All right, thank you all. I think, thank you, Rob especially, um, for hearing all that, for presenting, taking time with us tonight. Um, I think, I know that was a long conversation, as I warned us it might be, um, but I think it was really important. I think this has the potential to have a long-term impact. It was really important. So I did just want to point out, the hearing started on Monday. Um, the hearing for the warrant articles, I, I believe all of the other warrant articles were.
There are three warrant articles that were tabled.
Okay.
And, uh, heading on the other, um, this warrant article, they're maybe adjusted to the, uh, general operating.
Okay. Okay, so most of the warrant articles were, uh, approved to go on to the warrant, which will, um, be presented at a town meeting. There are three apparently that are sprinkled. That hearing will continue next Monday at seven o'clock in the municipal building. The one right between Molly's and Baloka. This is how I tell.
Directions kills my husband, but that's how they correct.
Um, that's where it is. Um.
It's live streaming, but it's not live.
Right, so you can't call into it.
So, I was, I was thinking, waiting for you to finish. Okay, Kari Asmus, but I guess I'm really waiting to hear you say. So, eh, what is the next step for the board? Because the statute says that the board can make a recommendation at the hearing, which is Monday.
Yes.
So will you all be prepared to make a statement because, um. At the last hearing, you all had to say we just are speaking as individuals, right? Sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. So we had said, yeah, thank you. We had said at the beginning, but it's a good reminder to mention it now. That during our business requiring action, if we would like to take a motion, take a position, um, and designate a board member to speak on our behalf. At the hearing, we can do that in business requiring action. So I would invite board members to kind of. Mull that over if we are prepared to take a position as a board.
May I offer an alternative?
You may.
Fit your right decision in writing also.
Okay.
Uh, you're welcome to attend.
You just love hearing from us. All right, thank you. Um, thank you, Kari, for that reminder. Um. We will move on to our principals' report.
The moment you've been waiting for. I have submitted this electronically. And because of the agenda we have this evening, I would like to cede the remainder of my time for all the important discussion, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Did anyone have questions for Lauren on the principal report? I'll just kind of get back into the right, okay, here we go. Anyone?
Okay. Just to be clear, I have all of five minutes, so you get four minutes.
Noted.
Don't do it, Deb.
No, 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 I have a quick question. See, will you be talking about the sustainability, the grant later?
I will, yeah. Um, I'll save time to myself then. How about that?
I cannot get into my agenda anymore. All right, what are we moving on to now? Thank you so much. While I wait, wait for this to reload, uh, tuition rate. Do we have an update on the tuition rate tonight? Teresa? Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Because we're still, I have not put me on that.
So that would be the tuition rate for Dresden, I believe. This would be the Hanover tuition rate. Okay, all right, so we will table that. Do we know when that has to be set? Off the top of my head, I don't know. Do you, Teresa, I will just ask you.
What I did know was, um, you really got a name.
Okay, so that would be my only concern is if we don't, uh. I'm reading before then. Is it not in our business requiring action? I apologize, guys, getting back in here. Technology's great when technology works. Um, yeah, we're ready to approve the tuition rate tonight. So, um, Teresa, just do me, do me a favor and. Um, check our deadline on that. If we need to do a special meeting, we'll do a special meeting. We can tack it on very easily to one of our sure upcoming meetings, right? So, because I'm just concerned about the deadline if we wait till our main meeting. Okay, is that everyone all right with that from the board? Yeah, okay. Look at this, moving right along, reading of policy. Ben's not here, we skip policy, moving right. I'm kidding, okay. Marcella, do you want to take policy?
Why don't we flip the order?
Put the order, okay. Um, with the board's permission, we will move on to the grants.
Back to me.
Back to you.
Great. Um, so the total grant monies does not meet the, um, policy for needing approval at the school board. But this is such a special little project that I did want to take a moment to highlight it. Um, so our kindergarten team created, um, a professional development goal altogether for this year. Uh, based around this troll project. Um, it's really neat. So this troll project. Um, is based on something called Guardians of the Seas by Thomas Dambo. Um, and it is actually an exhibit that you can go and visit in Maine. Um, this artist created, and I'll, I should probably go back and upload these pictures, but created these incredible trolls.
Oh, the big ones?
Yes, um, and each of these trolls has a name and represents something about the environment. And some sort of like a natural power. Um, and, uh, one of our kindergarten teachers, Leslie Conley. Went and visited herself and just felt. And one of our kindergarten teachers, Leslie Conley, went and visited herself and just felt really inspired by what she saw. So she brought along all of her kindergarten colleagues and they've taken on this incredible project and are having their students create trolls out in our back cathedral area so that students here at the Ray School can also do like a similar tour to what you could do with these trolls up in Maine. And it really, it ties together a bunch of beautiful things. So it's this collegiality between the members, among the members of the kindergarten team, all working together on a goal that involves sustainability, incredible professional development, working with students in kindergarten to increase their understanding of the world around them, which ties into a lot of work that they've been doing over many years in place-based learning and the outdoor classroom and various well. Well born, I just, I always say that wrong card, well born projects that they have been involved in. And so this partnership and this grant represents a partnership with the Equitable Climate Action Partnership, which is ECAT. And they are taking this money to continue their work around around trolls. So there's the trolls themselves, there's teaching of the teachings of the trolls, which include things like save seeds and plant more trees. And I think about this and I think about how beautiful this is for a kindergarten student and developmentally appropriate and like powerful, right? For the the global citizens and responsible stewards of the earth that we're trying to grow here. So save seeds and plant more trees, reduce and reuse, discover and share stories of the woods. And then become guardians of the seeds. So I look forward to getting the newsletters every week about progress made with the Guardians of the Seeds in their kindergarten classrooms as as they've been doing this work. Now, a quick funny story and then I'll stop. At one point, I was told that students cannot go out to sort of like the colonial house cathedral area because somebody spotted a bear in the blacksmith shop. And so we closed down the area, we called, you know, the game folks to like come and check it out. Is there a bear back there? Well, I had remembered later, but I didn't put it all together, that the kindergarten team went out to get some large wood cutting, some that they needed to collect to build their trolls and were storing these like huge pieces of wood in the blacksmith shop, which is one of our buildings out back. And so a student walked by and saw these big shadows and just assumed that there were bears. So anyway, this has been a super collaborative project. I'm really excited when this all comes together to be able to share this with the community and with the school board and hopefully folks will want to come and do their own tour. I just got a self-reflection from the kindergarten team today and they're expecting an on-target completion of May first of the trolls. And then the trolls will be installed on the May seventh on target for completion. So looking forward to that. Thank you.
We could do, thank you, Lauren, we could do like a school board field trip out to see the trolls at our main.
Yes, whether we have headlamps because it's later on in the meeting or we put it first and go out when there's the light, I think that would be really fun. Thank you for indulging me. It's a really neat thing.
Thank you for that, Lauren. Any questions for Lauren about the trolls? Or the grant? Mostly about.
I felt like it needed some context.
I think we needed a little leavening too. So this is great. Thank you. We skipped it.
Lawrence, sorry to step out and miss things.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We did, we did policy without you. So policies, no, just kidding. We reorganized your stuff.
For the science curriculum work.
Yes.
I thought one of the, one of the big goals of the curriculum realignment was alignment. And looking at this table, it looks like there's things that Ray and MCS are doing similarly, but things that they're still not doing.
Allow me to clarify.
Well, you're going back to the principal's report. We're going back within the minute. Got it. Okay.
Okay. So when we started this science collaborative effort with our colleagues at Marion Cross, it was both thinking about NGSS, the Next Generation Science Standards and the actual standards themselves, but just as important, if not more importantly, to also talk about the pedagogy involved and the shifts in teaching required for NGSS to be implemented correctly. So we developed our first unit together, Ray School and Marion Cross School in grade level groups. We worked on the entire unit. So that's that first column that says Ray slash MCS, all of us together, working on these collaborative units. In order to accomplish our goal of having at least three completed units by the end of this year, our next step was then to do a little divide and conquer. So we learned about all the things together, felt properly equipped that we could go off and develop units separately and then have the opportunity to share those units with each other and then all teach them. So by the end of this year, MCS, for example, MCS kindergarten teams will have created a weather unit that's shared with Ray to be implemented at Ray. And Ray will have created a molecules and organisms unit to share with MCSS, I'm sorry MCS, so that at the end of the year, we do have three units. One created together, one created by MCS, one created by Ray, but three that will be taught across the grade level. Does that help?
That makes a difference. Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
And it's.
No, we're moving, moving. Okay. Thank you for that. Any questions on the grants? Which is science related, so it's on hold in office. Okay, thank you so much and thank you to our kindergarten team for putting this together. It sounds like a really, really meaningful project. Let's move back to policy. Ben, does that, does that work?
Okay, so thank you for that digression on my part. So for our prospective candidates, I think it's most of the people here. The policy discussions that are applicable to all the schools typically are introduced at the SAU board, which our candidate would be a member of. And then that's kind of where like the meaty stuff happens. And then once it is read there, it kind of trickles down to the other school districts, including the one where we are tonight, where the conversation at the board level is fairly minimal because we've already discussed it. We welcome public comment about those things, but you see, if you're not a board doc, there's a lot of policies here tonight, but all of these have been discussed in other functions, also on camera, that we typically don't repeat ourselves. So for the stuff we're looking at tonight, board members, the sustainability is the second reading. I don't recall there were significant changes made based on the first discussion. There is the Title IX policies, which we did have some nuances on in terms of what it means and does not mean the board members can see there is some administrative content there I recommend you take a look at if you haven't seen it yet. That it's not really, the changes to Title IX we're talking about tonight are not new. They, it's more of how a complaint is reported if a complaint comes to us or more technically to the superintendent or to the schools. It does not take away any sort of process rights or anything about the right to complain. It's more just how you do that mechanism internally within the schools. And I think I'll leave it at that.
Okay, and I will note for board members that we are in our business requiring action, we are going to be approving or asked to approve policy DFA on investment and sustainability policy, which have seen multiple readings. So the investment policy is just perennial, never changes. So.
Yeah, that's yearly thing.
A yearly thing. And then the sustainability policy, we've already approved at least one for.
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah. Questions on policy? Board members, questions on policy from the public? Okay, seeing none, we will move along to substitute nurse pay. Is this Robin?
Yes. Robin? Hello, everyone. So we, I put together a report for the substitute nurses. I've been working with them since COVID as part of that project. And then I've been meeting with them monthly now for the past couple of years as part of K-12 meetings. And one of the issues that's come up over and over is the issue of substitute pay for nurses. We just cannot get nurses to come in and substitute. So I put together a report that gives you an idea of some comparison pay around us. We seem to have more difficulty because we have the hospital next door and so many of our potential nurse substitutes often go there because the pay is so much higher. So you can see that currently we're paying a hundred and seventy dollars, seventy five dollars per day, which is about twenty five dollars per hour. And we are, would like to increase that pay to three hundred dollars today per day, which will bring it to about forty three dollars per hour. And you can see, we looked into some private nursing organizations that we could get substitutes through. One is Dedicated Nursing Association, but the, for registered nurse, the pay is up to seventy two dollars per hour. It's quite high. And even schools around us, some are paying between two hundred and two hundred and fifty dollars per day. And I've given you a list of those, some up to two hundred and seventy five dollars per day. So we will be on the high end, but again, I think because we're next to the hospital. And you can see the hospital pay. This is from the website, but when I spoke with some of our nurses, they have been involved with also working at the hospital and they said that pay is actually much higher than what we see on the website. So it's just a good comparison. I also provided you with some information regarding the impact that it has on the schools. I know that nurse substitutes across the board for all of our positions are, you know, we're in dire need. But I think it leaves the schools particularly vulnerable when we don't have these nurses. One of the questions that came up when we met with the Norwich School Board is the impact that this would have on the budget if we did increase the pay. And Jamie talked about that specifically, that, you know, just based on the number of sick days that our teachers have, professional development days, personals days, if we took all of those days and combined those and had to pay a substitute for those days, I think the amount that she came up with was approximately six thousand dollars because we have one nurse in each school. It's generally not an issue at the high school because we do have coverage there if someone's out. So it's really an issue at the Ray School, the middle school, and the Norwich at Marion Cross. And I think also Nor, Lauren could speak too specifically about the impact that it's had on her at the Ray School because it seems to fall, honestly, when the nurses are out on our administrative staff, they tend to be the people that end up covering in those positions. So it just provides an extra burden for them. And I gave you an idea of what, examples of what our nurses do during a day. And some are, you know, they're extremely technical that people may not feel comfortable with dealing with. So I'm happy to answer any questions and I did put a lot of information in the report, but.
Can I, just before we take questions, did I hear you say the potential budget impact here is about six thousand dollars?
Yes.
You know, around for a head nod and I'm happy to take questions, but six thousand dollars, right? Okay, yeah.
I was just gonna say your colleagues on the Norwich Board were ready to go for it, but they wanted to defer until you had a chance to take a look at it because I don't want to be a competitive advantage.
Yes.
I would have never.
All right, I will take questions. Are there questions? Yes.
This isn't a question, but I just think it really is important for those, you know, old guard folks who might think a school nurse is dispensing aspirin and Band-Aids and wiping scraped knees, that that is not the world we are in. And so.
Yeah.
I I just think that's important and it's borne out by the documents on.
Yep.
Board docs.
Questions from the public? Okay, so we'll be asked to approve this in items requiring action. And there we go. You were rewarded for your patience. At the new board member interviews, okay, we are genuinely very, very, very grateful that you're all here. We are also thrilled to have such interest. Hopefully you all saw my letter that I meant to get out earlier and spent a lot of meetings this week. So I did not get it out earlier, but regardless of the outcome tonight, please don't go far away, right? I mean, we, we, as I mentioned in my letter, and this is true for everyone watching tonight, we will have seats up for election come March. So filing for that is in January. This is an eleven month position. Hopefully that person will want to re-up. But regardless, that position is up for election as well. So lots of opportunity to be involved and we're grateful to all of you for being here. So I had asked all candidates to, if they would like, prepare about three minutes of, you know, any additional information that you would like to share with us, specifically, specific areas of board service that interest you. And then we had a question about just conflicts of interest, anything that you think the board should know and why, why that isn't actually a potential conflict of interest for you, how you you plan to overcome that. And then I did have an additional question sent in that I wanted to mention and now I don't know where that ended up. Pardon me for two seconds. Yes, oh, time availability, that was it, availability. So we have a lot of, a fair number of committee meetings, many of those meet during the daytime. After school hours would kind of vary throughout the day on those committee commitments. But if you could also just give us a quick sense of, you know, what your general availability is, evening, daytime, that sort of thing, that would be helpful for us. So we'll just follow the order that is in board docs for lack of any better order. So this is in no specific order, it's just what's on the page. So starting with Renee.
Oh, I think it's ready tonight.
Yeah.
Also, I remind folks that this is a major commitment. We all paid elected officials and even when we're at the grocery store, you are representing the school board. I think all of us have gotten cornered in situations where we were not really anticipating and say, hey, what's going on with this budget? I have this issue. And I'm like, I'm getting diapers, you know, whatever. And it's sort of, it's not, you're never really off duty. You've seen what we, what we do here tonight, that, 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 in kind of the time factor, it's not typical, it's not a typical meeting, but we do have things like that, that, that happen. You know, they came to us to decide whether schools are open during COVID, that very little information was known and we didn't really know what we're doing, no one did. I think we did that as well as we could. That was not what most schools did around here. So we do have major decisions. We we need to make some heavy duty replacements in the next few months or years that come on us. It is a big ask, so please do not take it lightly. That said, it is incredibly fulfilling, a big part for the schools. And I don't regret doing it. And I just started my third term, it's a remarkable thing, but it is a major ask to sort of just know that this is a big deal if you join us for this eleven month trial run.
Yes.
If I could just offer a yes and to Ben comment, it's important also to know that even though you will be approached as a board member everywhere you go, you have no authority outside of a duly warned school board meeting unless the board charges you with some, some task. So it's important to balance that.
Yeah, absolutely. Renee?
Thank you.
So I'm Renee Sullivan. I live in Hanover. Instead of three minutes, I'm hoping this is less, but hello Chair McConnell and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to share more about my candidacy with you this evening. I'm going to insert this general availability thing because I think I'm going to forget otherwise. I'm very flexible during the daytime. I work part-time. I like work part-time for pay and full-time as mom, so that's a balance, as I know many of you have experienced. But being part of a school board has always been part of kind of the back of my mind. And so that's, I knew that was coming. I also heard a little bit more from Ben before this position came available because he and I got some coffee so I could learn more and was amazed at the amount of commitment of time that is all that you put in, but also then kind of let that settle and it felt right, given everything we talked about, about the quality of schools in this town. So in addition to all that, there's three other things I want to share with you. One, the area of board service that you asked about, given my experience with resource management as a consultant, I always like budgets and finance. They are also the place that I get to, you can see where the priorities of the district are. Second, as for relationships to schools, I have a very good friend with Beth Anne Schwartz, a Spanish teacher at the original middle school. Any decision I would make as a board member would be driven by data, so I do not see my friendship imposing a conflict of interest. I'm also currently the vice chair of the Friends for Hanover Norwich Schools, which I would resign from and selected. And I also serve as the Haven Coordinator of the Ray PTO and run the board's air K to walking bus, all of which are not funded by or run by the SAU. So I do not think they pose a challenge, but you can let me know if that's not right. Uh, so I do not think they pose a challenge, but you can let me know if that's not correct. Um, so finally, the thing that, uh, really is driving me more than anything right now is what's happening at the national level. And with so much that is being now pushed down to states, including, I mean, all that fun stuff with special education, which we know is a big thing within our budgets. Um, and frankly, just everything being demolished, uh, at the federal government. It's going to put more on the states and in New Hampshire, we are a very interesting state. Um, and with our local taxpayer base being the biggest, uh, of any, um, in this state. I feel like there's going to be some unique challenges that will be coming up, um, both policy-wise, budget-wise, that I would really like to be part of weathering those waters. So.
Thank you, Renee. Um, well, under three minutes. Good job. Um, are there questions for Renee? Specific question? Yeah, but.
Irene, thank you for that. Um, looking at sort of what you do in your day job, which is very impressive in terms of working with all these school districts and all these major towns. How nitty gritty do you get at this kind of stuff? Like. You know, are we, are you looking at numbers? Are you doing interviews? What kind of changes have you implemented? And what kind of changes have you tried to implement, but failed? Maybe to the school pushback or policies or politics or anything like that?
Yeah, um, all of that. Um, so as a consultant, I can even appreciate, I do not have direct power or authority over a school leader that I am working with or a district leader. However, we can kind of figure out where their goals lie and then kind of work with them to make sure anything that we're analyzing. Needs that, needs their needs. So technically, um, I was working at Education Resource Strategies Consulting Firm, um, in Boston for nine years. Early in that career, I was an analyst. So I was in the data, looking at numbers. So expenditure data downloaded from, uh, Boston Public Schools and Indianapolis Public Schools. And a few different districts, um, in Tennessee, we would merge that file. With all, I'm like laughing because of like ten of us in years, but it's, I did it many, many times. Uh, we'd merge expenditure file with, um, personnel data. So we could say, okay, we know we're spending X dollars on a certain number of people. Who are those people? Are they actually fully staffed? Then we get to that lovely data with, um, actual scheduling data. So how are those teachers scheduled in your schools? And that gets at the, the principal and the school level. So the conversations at the district level were about how are we actually spending our money? Is it aligned with the, what we, what we said we'd be spending on? We wanted to invest much more in science. Are we actually doing that? Or no, gosh, we have a lot of, um, extra vacancies. So our conversations in Tennessee were about human capital, um, and funding formulas. So they were moving from, um, steps and lanes. To more of a, um. Not, I don't know if they landed on merit being the right word, but you did more, you've got more responsibilities. You were mentoring teachers, you were a lead science teacher, you were taking on professional development with the county. You got extra pay for those things and you're modeling that. So we created an Excel file and said, okay, here's your steps and lanes. Um, like this is, you know, how many years of experience you have and the degrees right now, what would it look like if? We said the base pay actually overall for everybody is X. I can't remember what it was at the time in the forties. Um, as a starting, and then you can add on to that or whatever it is. So they were having a hard time staffing math teachers. So extra pay for math and science. Um, and on top of that, and you can kind of toggle with all those inputs. Um, so we did that in Tennessee, a few different districts, it was Knoxville and Nashville. Um, utilize that to help devise new funding formulas. I haven't looked at them recently. They're probably different because it was a decade ago, but that was one of the things we did. Now I work directly with larger public schools, specifically in a nonprofit, um, called Rich Success. Their focus is on cradle to career students, so not just school age kids. My kind of cut of their work in the past two and a half years has been with six K eights. Um, they are community schools. They are all very high need and their biggest challenge has been principal turnover. And consistency and, you know, leadership is a really, really, really big factor in retention of teachers. So shocker, there's a huge teacher turnover. Um, and lots of work term subs. And also related to that, big shocker, lots of chronic absenteeism. Um, and there's, they're complicated things now because ICE concerns, you're not getting kids coming to school for fear of being deported or not coming home to having parents. Um, and so there's a lot of, uh, kind of concerns about that. My role in that work is coaching with principals about how to actually engage with attendance data. So they'll download specific reports for me, um, which I'll kind of do pivot tables and sorts to say. Which kids have we reached out to in the past and what have we done? What was their tennis before? What is their tenants now? Are we seeing improvement? Who else should we be focusing on? What else can we do? What interventions are working well? Um, which is always a challenge because the tenant teams are very small and it always includes the principal who doesn't have time. Um, and so my role often becomes kind of coaching the team to say. We have limited resources. What can we do with our time? Who is the most priority right now? Um, so I'll come with a kind of more of a highlighted list based on what I think their capacity is. Um, which generally leads to good conversation, but, um.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Um, that was fascinating. Um, any other specific questions?
Okay, generic comment. If you guys have any questions for us in terms of, you know, workload, what we do and don't do, what we can and can't do. Please feel to ask us to. This can be a conversation that we don't usually say that in public comments is a little different. So.
I will say a, a brief conversation. So, um, yes, uh, also I'm happy to, um, take, I guess, pretty big decision tonight. So I have to do that. Any other questions for Renee? Renee, thank you so much. Um, moving on, that's me. Right. Yes. Moving on to, uh, Katie.
Katie. Two kids in the district are rising junior and a rising freshman. They've both been in the Hanover School since kindergarten. I previously served on the S A U Equity Committee, um, both of each of us. Long-term access, company wants to have different opinions to get something ready, but we did eventually craft the. Policy for the district to make sure every student got access to, um, everything they need to be successful. I co-own a web development and online marketing company that is twenty-one years old, sort of like sixty years old because web terms were sort of like dog years. Um, I am, it's a small company. There's only three of us, but my primary role aside from all the other hats I wear. Is project director and that role sees me communicating on a daily basis with all of our clients as well with my team. And that's very broad range of humans that I've been working with for the last twenty years. And I think that that gives me, uh, good skill set and just working with varying opinions and different people. Also a middle child to be a born mediator. Uh, for the past twenty or so years, I've spent my summers in Fairleigh, Vermont at Bonneville, which is the boys' summer camp. My husband is the director there. And while I don't have a direct role at the camp, I have had a front row seat to watching my husband as well as his staff sort of guide several generations of kids through. All of the things that have been thrown their ways over the last few years. And I've experienced also how the board, how the actions of the board can positively or negatively influence the entire community as well as the program. And I'd really like to be part of a board that does important things and does good things for the community. And I was going to say, you just brought this up, but. I really admired what this board did during COVID and like pushing all the parents and the teachers, sending the kids back to school, even with masks on. So. Pretty awesome. And I've seen through the camps, like lots of kids over the last five years now all over the world and how COVID affected them and how that isolation affected them. And, uh, it was a really awesome part of this district during that. I enjoy being part of a board that makes those tough decisions, especially when there's a community pushback like that. Um, I bring in strong communication skills to the board. I, I really enjoyed the policy writing. I didn't think I would, but I really got into that. Um, I'm also, I think, a good communicator with like the greater community. I am. Not a financial analyst or an advisor, but can get my way around a spreadsheet. I've done a lot of that and I would. And, um, yeah, thanks for your participation.
Awesome. Thank you, Katie. This is the questions for Katie. I don't know. I'm just gonna look this way from there.
So I've been a soccer coach at H B R for nineteen years.
I started at eleven.
But, okay. So it's not necessarily, is it following your kid or is it kind of staying in the same age group?
It started at eleven and before I had kids, I was just looking for something fun to do and I knew, um, that I had a parking wreck over there at Hall and I ran into him. Just looking for a coach and I was like, well, yeah, because you're insane. And I said, which one's your kid? And I was like, I don't, I don't know. I don't have one. And they're like, we're here. Then when I had kids that were older, when they were, I think, in kindergarten is when they started. And so I started following my kids through coaching. And that last two years, my rising junior and I co-coached my younger daughters grades. We coached her in seventh grade and coached her in eighth grade together. But yeah, so I've coached with H B R for. Nine, ten years? I'm not really sure.
Where I'm going with that, and thank you for that context, is as you may or may not know, there was a vote that was passed to, to push through the middle school sports. Which Kelly and I were probably the board members most involved with that at the, the board level. And I'm curious for your thoughts as a coach. Things we should watch out for or things you're happy or not happy about that change?
Yeah, I'm actually, I'm in, so I coached third and fourth was my sweet spot. I really enjoyed that age group. I was, I actually didn't coach my older daughter's seventh and eighth grade year because I didn't think I was qualified to coach middle school. But then I watched her, her year and I was like, oh, actually you can do a lot better than that. And that, that was just because like I had more experience and like when I get out there, I'm like really focused on making sure the kids have a good time. I love the whole Rex thing that like. Everyone wins. Like for the longest time, my kids were small. At the end of the game, like I was not keeping track of the scores. So the kids would be like, who won? And I was like, we tied.
Well, just everybody.
I think it's really great. I think it's going to make the middle school sports a lot more competitive. I think the coaching will be a lot more consistent. I think that's going to be really good for the kids. It's going to make them more competitive. There's been confusion every single year whether there should be an A and a B team and like the feedback always comes back that all the other schools have A and B. And I generally coach B team for the misfits and we would get crushed because the other schools weren't doing A and Bs. So I think having it be consistent and multiple can be a really positive thing. I mean, that's specific for soccer, but. Obviously basketball and other sports, but, um. Yeah, I think it's ultimately a really good thing. I'm not sure how the budget is going to fall like in terms of. Actually, it was a question I had, I'm not going to answer now, but like, yeah, with the busing and I didn't see anything about the coaches in the budget itself. Just that's.
It's in there. It's in there. It's gonna be great.
It's a healthy bone from H B R.
Yeah. I really think it's just going to be what schools do anyways. I think in ten years from now, people are going to be like, they didn't use to have run school sports. I think it's good.
Other questions for Katie? All right. Thank you so much. All right. Moving on. You guys probably know who's next better than I do.
Josh.
Thank you, Josh. Okay. Come on down.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Josh Hoppe. Um, I'm from here in Hanover. So in my day job, I invest in and deploy clean energy infrastructure on the power grid, but I do that for my home office. Uh, so I have a fairly flexible schedule. Uh, so. Uh, for the past twenty-five years, I've been in real work. A lot of that's been in the reserves. Um, that's winding down. My service in the reserves winding down. I'm retiring this year, which is great. But I have more time now and, uh, I seek to fill all holes in my schedule as quickly as I can. Uh, and I'd love to serve the community. Uh, so when I saw this, this opening on the school board, I thought, I thought I'd, uh, put my hat in the ring. So we've got this great strategic plan for our schools here, uh, in Hanover. And the top two goals in that plan are curriculum. And supporting students. And those actually align with my top two goals that, that I would seek to support. Uh, given the opportunity to serve on the school board, uh, there's been some. Community concern with curriculum, uh, of late. And I think directing. Our district's resources towards developing a coherent curriculum that runs through all of the schools. Uh, elementary, middle and high school is extremely important. And then supporting instruction through. Having a, having the best teachers and the best support staff to support those teachers. Um, I, I, I think is absolutely essential. Also, I'd be very excited to be a staunch advocate for making sure that the district has the resources that it needs. It was fun to watch the board advocate. Uh, for our tax revenue tonight. Actually, that was a lot of fun and I'd love to participate in that.
We gotta talk about your idea.
And help communicate, uh, to the public when it comes to town meeting on, on why it's so important to pass, to pass the school board's budget. So my wife's a kindergarten teacher here at the Ray School. Uh, she's taught in third grade, first grade and, and for the past couple of years in kindergarten. I don't believe that's a conflict of interest. It's not an automatic conflict or law. Uh, of course, if anything should come up. Uh, that directly impacts her financially and our family in some way, I would abstain, uh, from that vote. Right now she and her students are super busy building trolls. I hear about it. And it's been fantastic. Uh, but in any case, uh, that's me.
So thank you, Josh. Yes, that, um, so what committees would you be interested in serving on?
Well, uh. Perfectly candidly, I couldn't list all the committees right now.
You're just gonna be.
Area of interest.
Uh, certainly, um, whichever committee most directly impacts curriculum, uh, would be my top choice. Um, and policy, uh, and, and then. Whichever committee, uh. Communicates most directly with Hanover residents on our budget, uh, when it comes to town meeting and approving the budget.
Other questions? Thank you. Other questions for Josh? Yeah.
Uh, so appreciate that. In your letter, which I appreciated and it's actually breaking up on the website, which we all know and appreciate her service. In terms of a question, an answer to you, I think you're somewhat of a question is, you're right, it's not an automatic disqualification that have a spouse who works for the schools. What has happened with previous board members whose spouses worked for the schools, including a similar situation to yours. Is that that person would typically not be involved in negotiations in terms of unions, something like that. And did not vote when it came to approving teacher salaries. And so I think apart from that, I'm not aware of any other direct immediate disqualification that would occur in terms of what you could and could not do. So there's, there's that part. Um, and secondly, you, you do allude to. Seeing firsthand about what can happen for an unsteady approach, using your words, without getting into individual child management or any of that, but. What are some of the concerns you've seen? And do you have any proposed solutions?
Sure. Uh, so. Most recently, the math curriculum has been.
Which, which school?
Well, in, in the middle school.
Okay.
Uh, but that impacts. Everything. It impacts the elementary students rising to the middle school and then it, it, it impacts middle schoolers going to high school even more. Um, and it, it impacts students who are at the top and students who are at the bottom most. Uh, so students who are at the top. Don't have under the curriculum as it was proposed. Obviously everything's still in place. Uh. Students at the top were losing out on the opportunity for, uh. The type of advanced mathematics that, that they had before and have at other schools like Crossroads. So students who have the resources can cross roads, middle schools because of it. And then students at the bottom, uh, were placed with. You know, were, were, were to be placed with kind of everyone else, um. Regardless of the additional level of support that they needed. And that wasn't properly differentiating for them either. So catered very well for, uh. Kind of the, the top of the bell curve, if you were, if you will, but one standard deviation left and right, but we're left out of that curriculum. Um, so. Having a curriculum that properly differentiates for students of all abilities and provides the support that they need that runs through elementary, middle and into high school. Uh, so that all students can achieve their best possible personal outcomes. Um, I, I think that, that needs to be the goal.
Okay. Other questions for Josh? Okay. Thank you so much. Joe.
If I maintain my record for brevity.
So like twenty seconds. So that's going to be hard.
Joe Laws again, um, regarding the, the scheduling. Um, I own my own business and startup. So as long as I have at least a day's notice, I'm relatively flexible. And I can play around it. I'd say the harder thing is the four children in Ray School. Working around that and after they come home, it is more difficult. But it's doable with, with sufficient notice to coordinate. That being said, I have a parent statement to insurance. As a co-founder and CEO of a fast-growing company, I've managed multimillion-dollar budgets while coordinating technology vendors and complex contracts. This experience has taught me the importance of strategic resource allocation and fiscal responsibility. These skills would serve the district well on budget and negotiation committees, where I can help ensure investments enhance educational outcomes while remaining accountable to taxpayers. And secondly, in my work deploying AI agents across healthcare, finance and professional sports, I've witnessed firsthand how dramatically the landscape of work is changing. The students in our classrooms today will enter a workforce that looks vastly different than the one we were trained for. We must proactively prepare our children for this new reality, not only in how they will work, but also in defining the very nature of work that they do. I would be honored to bring this perspective to the strategic planning of education committees, ensuring that our educational strategies align effectively with tomorrow's workforce needs. Ultimately, I'm enthusiastic to contribute wherever you think my skills and expertise will serve the students, educators and the community.
Thank you, Joe. Questions for Joe? You're doing great, Ben. You're doing great.
So given that you, you mentioned four young children, I won't get into the pragmatic logistics of that, so I agree. So you're welcome. How, how did you get involved with this other school district's plan? That, is that a volunteer thing where you approached based on technical expertise or something else? And why, why were you brought in? And what did, what is something you learned not to do as a result of that in schools?
It's a good question. I'd say the biggest thing is I'm maybe probably an oddball where there's a problem people are talking about. I look into how it could be fixed. And so parents were talking about these issues with the school district or just education in general. And I started reading up on what the town was doing and then actual research papers on what the best policies were. And then I started attending board meetings and giving statements. And then the superintendent asked me to participate in the strategic planning committee from there. And so it was more of just kind of an oddball where I'll like get sucked into areas and want to contribute and just have to learn more and find ways to contribute. Yes, the, the time and schedule, I always just managed to fill up the holes. As Josh was saying, you always act as an ex-military as well. Like you're used to just having every minute of every hour occupied with something contributing somewhere.
My question actually dovetails with that. I know working on a strategic plan is a huge commitment of time over quite some time. But am I correct that you lived in Woodstock at the time? And you just moved to Hannover?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, I'm, so I'm curious, after investing so much in a strategic plan that on the surface looks great, what prompted you to move to Hannover?
The Vermont in general was so very good. They, the education system is much more state-driven. And the high school in Woodstock is, I think, now the oldest or the second oldest in the state, in danger of being condemned every day. When you go on a tour and it has smells, it's just terrible, falling apart. And I was worried that my kids wouldn't have a school to go to by the time they get into it. And the towns, I advocated articles to newspaper, but they still voted down the, the bond, like similar to. They passed the tip in the town, but they didn't pass the bond for the school. And so they actively were working against. And the other thing is the state, if the, the problem was if the town raised money and increased their school budget, the state gets two-thirds of anything they increase. And so there was no way that could, that taxpayers were going to shoulder that, that burden. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, and more of a comment rather than directly specifically, but just to make sure everyone's clear because several members of this board, we didn't know it when we signed up. But you are not just on the Hanover School Board, should you join us. You are also on the Dresden School Board and the SAU School Board, both of which also has Norwich board members on it. So you have the advantage that you know a little bit about Vermont School Board-related laws and issues. But everyone else who joins the board will become experts. So we have to also deal with sort of the laws of two states. Now Dresden and S U do technically are considered New Hampshire school districts. But we do have to pay attention to the daily politics in Vermont much more than I want to. So just, there's that caveat that we haven't explicitly said yet, but it becomes to the forepoint very quickly.
As do our esteemed leaders.
Yes.
Other questions for Joe? Joe, thank you so much. And I'll apologize to everyone, I'm realizing, looking at you sitting, I've sat in this. They are great for kindergartners and first graders, not great for adults.
Still better than Norwich.
Apologies for that. Um, okay, we are moving on to, I'm so sorry, I lost the. Valerie, thank you.
As you guys probably appreciate, this is going to be a very tough decision that we have to make.
Yeah, we just add nine people.
Apologies.
Okay. It's about you online. So let's get Valerie for now. I knew Valerie had a conflict, so it may just not have been possible.
It's Lewis Warden and I live on Johnford Road in Edna. I moved up here in August of 2021. My husband is now a math teacher at Hannover High School, so I suppose that's a thing. Our boys, we have three boys, one is older in graduate school, not here. But my middle son Wes is 16 and is sophomore at the high school. My youngest Harvey is an eighth grader at RMS. I'm a social worker. I've been a clinical social worker for 20 years now. Since moving up here, I work on the psychiatry consult service to the emergency room. So kind of on the front lines of the mental health crisis that I think kids and families are dealing with. I mean, it was happening before COVID, but I think post-COVID is a whole new kind of landscape. So my interest in volunteering for the board is in part because I want to be involved in kind of help with the current kids that are there, but also really in hoping to help focus on curriculum, specifically focused on social emotional learning at all ages. I think that the, I mean, I say almost on a daily basis, I think, maybe this is not people overseas, but I think somebody should just break the internet. Like anyway, uh, social media, all that kind of stuff. Jonathan Haidt just came out with an excellent book about the anxious generation. And I think we have a, like a situation here in the Upper Valley where people's values are really in the right place. I think getting kids outdoors, involved in activities and sports. And you've heard from me about a JV hockey team at the high school. These are things that I think are really important for kids. Uh, and yeah, I just want to sort of participate in that. Um, and I will not vote on things for teacher salary. I know, yeah, that's, I think.
Appreciate that. Um, specific questions for you? I'm looking this way first. Tara? No? Harry, Deb? Ben?
Um, you know, so I'll ask you a similar question that I asked Josh, which is in, in your letter, you did mention that you have concerns. I'm, I'm hearing through the lines about, you know, internet usage and perhaps indoors and all that kind of thing. Are the concerns that you are mentioning, which you do say is happening in our schools, are those things that you have specific concerns about within the Hanover schools? Or you mean sort of generic, not, not generic, but more geared to state, national level concerns?
Oh, I think definitely in the Hanover schools. I've watched kind of RMS staff administrators really struggle with how to, you know, I think that Tim Boyle and.
To clarification, if you cannot name individuals, we appreciate that.
Yeah, uh, oh, sorry.
RMS administration.
Administration had a great focus on wait until eight in terms of having a personal device, things like that. But I don't think that's the reality of what's been happening. So I just think that educators, administrators, parents are, would respond well to more guidance on how to navigate particularly, like there are fads that happen on TikTok or YouTube, and there's a lot of reaction. And I think that there's a lot of room for just improving knowledge and strategies for coping with those situations. And I think it can also be from student to student, like things that happen on social media and how that's handled in schools. I mean, it's messy.
Thank you. Other questions for you? All right, Inez, thank you so much. Lawrence?
I'm Lawrence Walters. Thanks for your consideration in this process. Uh, you've seen my letter and know I'm a father to kids in the district. And then I'm passionate about supporting our professional educators to provide the best educational opportunities for our community with our sometimes limited resources. I have no conflicts of interest with the board or school. Uh, I'm also highly available on the software engineer. I work from home. I don't travel to work anymore, thankfully. So daytime meetings are very possible with, you know, the usual notice. For committee service, I can bring experience with policy and collaboration. I'm currently part of the CIPC, you know, I've seen, yeah, I saw a chart. That was, that's like. So I'm on the CIPC committee with the town of Hanover, so I've been through one budget cycle, so far with that. Uh, I understand some of their priorities, some of the things they're talking about here today and how that impacts the school. So I'd be happy to be the representative of the CIPC for this board. I also mentioned I serve on Hartford Dismas House Council and the Howe Library Corporation Board. So I understand the process of collaboration. Actually, Hartford, the Dismas House as an organization has a consensus process with its council, which is super interesting. It's not a, we vote for this, we vote for that. It's we talk it out until we come to a solution, which is wild. But it's happened one time where there was like a challenging issue. And then, so the other things I'm interested in, the NHSBA liaison and strategic planning and policy. One thing that I do want to emphasize is that as a board, we don't run the school at an integrated level. We work with the professionals, provide extra resource, extra eyeballs, oversight. And that's really what I'm interested in. So for example, one of my personal experiences with the school, I had to experience the math curriculum in RMS. I've been an eighth grader. It's not working out for him. And it's a real bump. And that's my personal experience that I would bring to this board. But at the same time, I don't want to say, oh, we can't do it like this. We can't do self-paced education. I fully agree with the idea that we need to detract and we need an equitable process to math advancement. But maybe self-paced learning is not the solution. What are our pros saying? And that's, and this is where I would, would not come in and say, oh, we need honors, we need beginning, we need middle. I would say, tell me what the research does. What is our goal? Is our goal an equitable approach to success in math? An inclusion of all students in math? Tell me how that works, because I'm not professionally educated in this topic. And so I would lean on my pros to do that. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Joe. Questions for Joe? Lawrence? I've been doing so well. Very. Apologize. Yeah.
Joe has one.
Henceforth, you could all be named Joe.
Lawrence, thank you for your comments, particularly the, the very realistic comment about what, what level the board typically stays at, which is usually where we are. Sometimes we go more random, I think, than we intend to. Sometimes we stay right where we're supposed to. Apologies to Jay many times for that. My question, yes, is with your various volunteer stuff, which is all fantastic. I applaud you. You, you can do what I cannot. What was, in one of these board roles or committee roles, what was a crisis you had to deal with? And how did you on the board know how involved to get? And what did you choose to do? And you don't have to get too specific.
Yeah. No, this is actually really cool because this is, this is the Dismas House consensus model, which I didn't, you know, at first you sign up, you're on the board for a couple of years, you're like consensus model. And then something happens and you're just like, holy crap, consensus model. So Dismas House is, um, the goal is to integrate formerly incarcerated people with community and integrate community with formerly incarcerated people. And so one of those things we do is we, we, as on the council, we try to bring, we try to have a resident of the house, formerly incarcerated person, participate in all of our decisions and all of our planning activities that we do as a council. So there's also a, the house is a sober house, and they also have rules about substance used in the house. So we had one resident who really wanted to be on the committee or on the council. Yet he was using in the house and violating kind of a house rule. So he, he wants to serve the, the community, yet he's violating the community rules. And the house manager came to us and said, look, resident X wants to participate, and that's fantastic. But I think he shouldn't come to these meetings unless he plays by the rules. Okay, so you're in a formerly incarcerated environment, which is all about second chances. It's all about not further punishing. It's all about collaboration and helping people make good choices and then giving them the support they need. What do you do? And so we actually had like an hour-long discussion about could this person join that? And then everybody got to share their piece. And what we did was we said, he can't join tonight, and we're going to talk about it in, in one month. And so, you know, crisis, right? This is not like a hugely impactful thing, but it's kind of a step in this person's journey. And we're going to have a positive impact if we can. So we ended up, all of us kind of talked it out. And then we were able to think about it for several weeks. And then our next meeting, we decided, you know, you do need to follow the rules. But one of the big things was, what is this going to do to the relationship between this resident and the house manager? If we kind of go against that? I mean, that's what changed my mind. But anyway, it was, it was interesting to learn about the consensus model.
Thank you. Any other questions for Lauren? Okay, thank you so much. And last, but most certainly not least, Anastasia. And I will just say before Anastasia steps up, Michael, who was our, our final candidate, actually, in looking at everyone's letters, said, everyone looks phenomenal. I will politely withdraw myself. Hope the answer Michael, and again, I will say, please, please come back. Please come back. So Anastasia.
My name is Anastasia Rontzinko. I live in Edna. The board probably knows me, or at least the older members of the board, because I have been very critical of the schools in the past when I had an issue with my son. It was my first child. I was like, not used to anything. But it did force me to dive deep into how education works. Since then, I've watched every school board meeting. I kind of know how it works, but I'm also very comfortable learning things I have no idea about. I've managed construction with two homes because I, I was like, I want to build a house. And I didn't have any background, but I learned building code. I learned to read laws. I learned to meet with different types of people. So I don't necessarily have experience like in finance or something, but I'm comfortable jumping into the budget committee and finding creative ways. Like we have a crisis with financing, the district, it sounds like this. I didn't know about the tip thing, but I hope that I can bring some creative approach to like, how do we solve this issue? I was a programmer before, and I learned FORTRAN, which is like the first programming language. So I feel like that experience made me feel like I could learn anything. And that's all I have to offer, basically.
Thank you so much, Anastasia. Questions for Anastasia?
Hi, Anastasia. So similarly to the comments that I asked for Josh and someone else, where you, in your letter, expressed that you've had concerns. Um, and the only thing to note is that you also graduated from Hannover High School. So you have sort of, I think, a longer perspective than I think the vast majority of people in this room, maybe not all of them. It's sort of, without getting into the level of the individual child or person, what are some of the concerns you've seen? How new are we more helpful than, than older in terms of current issues? And what would you recommend if you were on the board that you would do about them?
Similar to you, Inez, I think that screens are pretty. Similar to you, I think that screens are pretty bad for kids. I mean, my first pediatrician appointment was like, watch out, screen time, your baby isn't watching screens. And then, so I was really surprised that the school encourages screen time and I feel like parents and the school have to work together to like, what's the healthiest thing? Like we have, we're living in the information age. We can find what's the healthiest thing for kids. Let's create that fresh air running around. You know, maybe they don't learn physics at elementary school, but like, or how to use a computer, but maybe they're happier and maybe they're more resilient because they interact with the real world and not like the mean comments online or, or something like that. I guess that's my take.
Other thoughts, other, sorry, questions? All right, Anastasia, thank you so much. Oh, yes, question, yes, public comment, always public.
So, Kim, are you running again?
So, yeah, Kim Hartman, yeah, I, I'm the opening for the discussion. And actually, it's really weird. I'm, I'm really still thinking around because there's an action on the tip, which I feel compelled to help my colleagues on. But it, it is like, we're kind of watching your own hero. What I want to share, and I'm really happy to run it off the sunset. I really hope you don't see me at the next meeting. It's really just the tip, but I'm really happy to offer any sort of, you know, a phone call, a coffee discussion, or whatever, whoever is picked, and, you know, just to try to think about what committees you might be on. You might be on some committees. And so, you know, really just happy to, to offer reaching out, having a discussion. It's, as you can see from just the tip discussion alone, it can get real complicated really fast. It involves, you know, a lot of background information. I'm happy to kind of get you up to speed because others have warned me to do the same. So just wanted to say thank you all for coming out and then stick it together.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Yes.
Thank.
I just want to thank everybody. This is such a great turnout. We had this situation before and had a couple of people show up. And I am so grateful to not be a voting member of the school board, because it would be an impossible choice. You're, you're all, I mean, the fact that you're willing, number one, is, is huge. And that, just the experience and talent and the desire in this, in, in, the collection of folks we have here tonight is going to make this a very difficult non-public session for the board.
But hopefully, Bruce.
Good thing I didn't.
Difficult, but hopefully, Bruce.
And I'll just also say that as a person that, you know, this is my second meeting. On the ballot, unopposed, all I had to do was sign my name and the date in which I gave it to the main office. I'm also really impressed because I, we know more about you guys than they probably do. Yeah, thank you for being here.
Yes, Ben.
We think you're great, Carrie.
I'll echo what everyone else has said, that we have a very difficult decision. The vast majority, I think, what we've heard has been phenomenal. So thanks to all of you for being this. And I would encourage you that seven people are going home either very sad or very happy tonight. But I would encourage all seven of those people to stay involved in whatever way it makes sense to you, whether that's future board candidacy or just watching meetings or staying involved volunteering, you know, do whatever makes sense for you. We appreciate you and, and all you do as parents and as citizens. I will add one thing that I would like as a board member, which I've done previously, as Jase, I mentioned, this has happened a couple of times in my tenure on the board, is I think board members should declare any interest we have in any folks here, anyone we're, we're friends with or we're buddies with, or we work with professionally, and that's, I think, full transparency on our side is also helpful. And for example, what I, I'll, I'll start just in full disclosure is that I think it's safe to say I recognize, so I'm in this room for like kid, family, race, school context, Josh and Jake, I've seen you everywhere. I don't think I've ever talked to you before. I don't think I knew your name, but I recognize you.
I wouldn't get into that complex.
No, but I mean, if you're just, or as, as some members of, some of the parents have alluded to, I've had conversations with Anastasia and Renee and Eunice by email on board-related things. But I do not think I have a conflict of interest with anyone here in terms of friendships, employers, whatever.
We did, we would all just, you know.
You, historically, that did not necessarily happen. That's why.
How ethical you are.
Thank you, Ben.
If anyone else has anything, it'd be nice if we heard it.
Well, I will say I don't know any of you, except I met with Lawrence, who I see with, at the How Library events. And I, we had coffee so that he could ask me questions. And I know who Lawrence is. All the rest of you. Now you know. All right. If there is nothing else, I will take a motion to enter into non-public session before we do that. So we do have one other item, the nominations list as well. So this will probably be about 15 minutes, recognizing the late hour. Our hope was to swear someone in this evening. That said, I can't guarantee how long this is going to be. So if it is now almost nine thirty, if you have childcare, if you have things you need to get to, and you cannot say for that, even if you are selected, we would understand that and that is acceptable. So I just wanted to give everyone that out. Because this, hopefully 15 minutes, that would be my hope, but I can't guarantee that. We will also, sorry, you get to stick around. I'm so sorry.
Fifteen minutes, I'll be really.
Yeah, yeah. I also, I'm just for the, for the public who's listening, so our, our intention is to go, select someone, come back in, and potentially swear that person in if they are able to stay until that happens. So that. There is more. I'm moving to enter into non, oh, sorry. Ben, you are recognized. Okay, I move to enter into non-public session at nine twenty-four PM under RSA ninety-one dash A, calling three, two, B, and C.
For a second.
Okay, Tara seconds. And I will take a roll call vote, starting with Tara.
So, yes.
Blasphemy.
Keeney, yes.
Nelson, yes.
Russell, yes.
And McConnell, yes. And again, thank you all.
Thank you.
Are we doing any?
Taking note.
Are we doing any?
So just that.
I recommend that we do the not make.
One of us. Yeah, if one has a rose, we can get it.
Okay, back in public. Okay, so we will re-enter public session. Thank you again all for your patience. We would like to propose reordering, I would like to propose reordering the business requiring action to skip immediately to the nomination and appointment of a new board member. I will take a motion to appoint a new board member.
I, right, a motion to.
Carrie, oh.
Yes. I move to nominate Renee Sullivan as the new Hanover School Board Member, replacing Kimberly Hartman for a one-year school board position until the March 2026 election.
We do not believe, we need a second. And we don't have any members online, so we can just take a show of hands, all in favor. And that is unanimous. Thank you so much, Renee. Thankfully, we replaced everybody, and again, I know we said it a thousand times. We literally would put you all on the board right now if we could, and in fact, we talked about how many of us want to resign right now. Would be willing to, would be willing to.
You're saying.
And we genuinely hope that you will run in January, so be on the lookout for those postings, please. So, thank you, everybody. Renee, we will go ahead and swear you in.
Can we do that with Jamie?
I, I think we are allowed to do it, is what I am told, that we, we personally are able to. So. We appreciate guys. You are welcome to stay.
Yeah.
That we can do it.
You see the oak, right?
Yes. And I guess we will sign it afterwards, so. Renee, if you want to come on, right? And read, read this.
And if you're uncomfortable with that language, there's alternative language below in terms of religious statements.
Oh, that's nice, that's, I'm confused, I'm just gonna keep going. I, Renee Sullivan, do solemnly swear that I will bear faith and true allegiance to the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire and will support the constitutions thereof, so help me God. Do I keep going? I keep going. I, Renee Sullivan, do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent on me as a school board member according to the best of my abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of this constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, to help me God. The italic is done. I think that's right, yes. It's wonderful, thank you so much, and we will sign that, and you are excellent, so if you want to come join us, I think you can chair.
I can sit out there.
Okay, so I will move us along, Renee, welcome, a huge and hearty welcome. I will move us along to our business requiring act, or the rest of our business requiring action. I will note that we have removed the tuition approval from this list, so it is now items B through F. If someone would like to make a motion, since we pulled G out, so items B through F, yes.
I have moved to approve items B through F by consent.
Is there a second? Ben, and all in favor, please raise your hands, Renee, you get to vote too. That is unanimous now, including Renee as well. With that, we will move on to the report of the chair, I.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a motion regarding TIP or something?
Oh, Russ, thank you very much, okay, and TIP motion, yes. Yes, sorry, Jim, here, for this very motion. Do we want to take a position, do we just want to enable a representative?
Those can be separate, those can be separate movements as well.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm concerned that, given the absence of data, or given the impact on the school, given the late. Notification of the statutorily required groups that we cannot support, that we do not support Article 10 on the warrant.
I, I don't think that they met their statutory requirement because the data that they were supposed to present.
Right.
And this notification was to fully inform us of the tax and financial implications, which they did not, so.
Yes.
And that the hearing started already before this meeting, it is ongoing in a technical sense.
That's fine, I don't think that matters, they haven't voted.
Well, that's part of the statute.
It matters.
Oh, before.
Before the start of the hearing.
But, but, but in terms of context, they notified the county in December.
Oh, really?
That's what they said.
That's what they said.
If you look at the beginning of the RSA, they haven't even met some of those items, they're supposed to estimate the budget, estimate the tax implication.
Just to clarify. Oh, yeah, and just to clarify, what was stated at the meeting on Monday was that they sent an email to the county commissioner, I believe, and to our superintendent in whatever, December, January, whatever the date was, but that does not constitute providing the data, that does not constitute meeting with or providing an opportunity to meet with the governing body, which is us, it is not the superintendent. I don't know on the commissioner's level, at the county level, but the fact that you sent an email to me does not alleviate the responsibility to present the data, right?
And not only that, I believe it's the select board that's supposed to be meeting with us, not the town manager.
We have stated.
Unless he was their representative, which I did not get a clear sense that was.
I think he was kind of saying that I'm, I'm not the sole for, right? That was, whoa, in fact, yeah.
So it sounds to me like, we do want to, like you say, like we both, I think there's a both here, right, like make a statement, we don't support this based on lovely list you made, and do we have somebody who's available to be there as a representative? Because I, yeah.
But they're already going to know what I say if I.
That's fine, I think now you're, you're not saying it, the board is saying it, does that make sense?
That's a rare, the second emotion need to occur.
For sure, but in that, in that.
I, I have to be at another meeting at eight, I could go if they would let me speak early to deliver the news.
I would love for you to do it, I would love that, so why don't we both plan to go, and if they let the, let it be early, give us both the option.
Okay.
And if they let the, the declaration be done earlier, I would love for you to do it.
Do we have to name a person, or can it just be a representative of the board?
I'll go.
You have to.
I want to say one other thing. I want to say one other thing, I'm actually thrilled that whatever our decision on this, it is only a decision on the funding mechanism. It is our support or not support of the formation of a TIP, it is really not speaking to the underlying value of the proposed project. Which is totally different, so, I mean, I have a very clear idea on my position on the TIP.
Yeah.
And, and I have other thoughts about the project, and I'm glad you're separate.
Okay, so I, at this point, would like to take a motion, and then if we want to continue discussion of that motion, we can do that, does anyone feel comfortable crafting language or emotion?
Jay. I don't, but.
Raise your hand and say no.
Someone with, who may have some suggested language for us, which is why she's stuck around, no?
Okay. In case we need to call, phone a friend.
Well, I could take a crack.
Yeah, take a crack at making, and we can amend it as needed, so.
I move that the Hanover School Board owes the discussed tax incremental financing district as prepared in its current form by the town manager.
They're going to amend it, they already told us, but they're going to edit it.
So that was the motion.
Yeah, is there a second?
Is there a second? There's a second motion. Okay, if someone would like to make a different motion, seeing no second, we can make a new motion, thank you for trying. Appreciate the effort.
Really do think it's valuable to list our concern.
Yes.
And so I would make a motion that given the absence of data, given the failure to meet the statutory requirements, and given our concerns about the impact on school budgets, the Hanover School Board does not support the TIP. The what?
By the adoption of the TIP.
The adoption of the TIP by the town of Hanover. I didn't write that down. Did you?
I have a question, a process question.
Could I take a second first?
Yeah.
I will second.
Okay, great, and now discussion.
Do we need to mention more Article 10? In our motion.
And maybe mention the, the Wheelock TIP. Is there our ongoing TIPS?
Right, sure. The Wheelock District, is that what it's, is that what it's called?
West Main.
It's West Wheelock.
It's Main, I think it's.
Wheelock.
You're right. The Main Wheelock. The cre, okay. Would it be the creation of the Main Wheelock?
Main and W Wheelock.
Yeah, of the proposed.
Brian, apologize.
We like to, oh, we're going to reread it, TIP District, okay. Is there further discussion on this? Let me reread it, and then we can see if they will accept the amendment. Given the absence of data, given the failure to meet the statutory requirements, you might want to put the RSA in there, of RSA, whatever it is.
162 dash K.
Thank you. 162 dash K, colon nine. And given our concerns about the impact on school budgets. Yeah, the Hanover School Board.
I would say detrimental.
Okay, the detrimental impacts. On school budget, the Hanover School Board does not support the adoption of proposed Main and Wheelock TIP District.
West Wheelock.
And West Wheelock District.
Do we want to say absence of data, do we want to specify which data? Seems like there's a whole lot of.
Like zero data. Although I will say, the first, this is the first I've heard that, oh, we're anticipating $117 million, they, it was like that didn't, number didn't want to be shared.
I was also concerned about 14 million, and then another 14 million, are there two 14 million?
Yeah, 28 million.
I did not, that's the first time I've heard that.
Well, it's also the first time we heard that the 25% that theoretically was going to the town may now, some of it come to us, but.
Maybe.
Do we want to say lack of end date?
Oh, yes, yeah, thank you. Given the absence of data.
I mean, the bond amount specificity is also a problem.
Absence of an end date.
He also mentioned, I mean, he said the 117 million, then he didn't say, we'd see 1.7 of that, i.e. 1%? Didn't he say that?
He said 1, 1.2 million dollars in payment per 14 million dollars.
There was a lot of numbers with hours, yeah. The absence, of, what did we just say, the absence of.
Data.
A proposed.
And, and, and.
I put that in, proposed bond. Okay. Tell every read.
Yeah, let's get the exact language too for trust.
Thank you. Okay, so I have, given the absence of data, given the absence of an end date, given the absence of a proposed bond, given the failure to meet the statutory requirements of RSA 162 K, colon nine, and given our concerns about the detrimental impact on school budgets, this Hanover School Board does not support the adoption of those main and west relative district. It should be at impact on a two. Further comment for the discussion? Any public comments or discussion? Any of them online still?
Yes. I have no comments.
I, I just want to, this is the point of data, so I, I don't know what was communicated on December, I, I was not on the field at the time. But the, the draft that we have seen in the plan was not created until the February select board meeting, so I don't know what was, I, I don't know what was non-public before, right, to be fair. I don't know what was, I I don't know what was non-public before, right? To be fair, um, but I I I know that the select board really, you know, didn't look at that until then. Um, so just wanted to give another data point. I think adding the end date is it the the lack of an end date is really critical. The New Hampshire Municipal Association has this really nice little pithy website. And I've shared it with a couple of you, happy to share it with others. I'm basically just saying what is this? What are best practices?
I shared that with the board.
Right. So thank you. So so the the end date is actually the key motivating factor for a school district, according to the New Hampshire Municipal Association, supporting the project. And as is written, um, it is, it it is in perpetuity, essentially. Um, the which kind of by definition makes it a really hard thing for a school district to support, I think.
Uh huh.
Um. I could keep going on, and I would be happy to if anybody wants to, but I think I'll stay.
Anyway, I will, yeah. Um. Okay, any other comments on the proposed wording? Okay, on the amended wording, I should say. Um, Deb, would you be willing to accept the amendment?
You bet.
Um, so I will take a vote on the.
Sorry, one one idea.
Yes.
Um. To be more solution oriented versus critical, just throwing this out, I mean. School districts can opt out of districts, and if you want to add language saying we would have no opinion on this project if the school districts opt out of the tip. Um. Something to consider, right? Um, it would it would it would give an olive branch of, guess what? We can revenue share. Um, and just we will opt out of it. So that can be a different piece to think about. Um.
Oh, so that we would withdraw our objection to this if we were.
Well, so so for instance, I mean, what will we know is that they said as a preamble of the public hearing on Monday, the select board said, we've asked for more information. The CIPC on Friday asked for more information. They didn't have it delivered by Monday. They said they would do it by the fourteenth. We don't know what data is getting created, to be fair. So if the school board says we don't have data.
Uh huh.
And then they present data on the fourteenth, which we don't know, which clearly is after or not in time for any actual deliberation, right? From the school board side, but it is data. Right? I just I'm just trying to figure out ways to give options, but also really highlight what the concerns are of the school district. Yes, there is a process for sure. I'm not negating the legality of it. But then also where's the path forward? Like i- is is the school district inclined to having these meetings over the next year and and proposing to come back? And saying we would, we would encourage uh, i- if it passes, right? So they only need three votes on the select board and they only need it. This will be an annual meeting at the town or the town meeting. Voice vote likely, um, or some sort of in this will be an in-person vote, likely not on the ballot. Um, so we're saying who is going to show up at seven P M. to vote on this? Um, just to kind of give a sense of what kinds of options can you propose? If this passes, right?
Uh huh.
And if this passes, what does what does the school board? What are the levers or how do we want to get get involved? By by law, if it's followed, there's supposed to be an advisory committee that is developed. Um, and this advisory committee, we can request hey, if this does pass, we would like a seat on the TIP advisory committee because we are actually the ones giving up the resource to help pay for this project. Um, by law, it's supposed to be a majority, represents a majority of a majority of the people who sit in the seats have to be living in the TIP district. They don't have to live. They can also be business owners. But would be, but the question is, well, then if this does pass and advisory is created, it has been suggested by the select board that the chair of that would be the chair of the CIPC, who is John Dolan, who currently serves the Hanover Finance Committee. Um, and and actually, I I will thank John Dolan for the one bringing up this project, the DIPC, which school board is is on, kind of helped us figure out what's going on. Um, and so, but there would be an additional committee, like, do does this, does the school board would like to request a seat on that? I think there's there's a different ways the conversation can go on the fourteenth and not saying that it's the only way for a discussion, but I can see different different ways that the conversation could go that might try to alleviate some of the stated concerns, but not actually get to the point of what the school district is really hoping for. I think I don't know. That he, sitting as a member of the public, it's like, is the concern really? We just went out of this or we're or are we like wanting to negotiate?
Uh huh.
Getting cut out is just not right. Um, you know, what, you know, and 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 maybe maybe it's no now, but talk about it. So I just I just want us to to think about like when when you when you reread that that action. Does it give you enough flexibility to say what you want?
But I'm going to take, so Kari is online. It's okay. I'll take her comment. Um, she has her hand up if we can.
Can I say something quick to Kim?
Yes.
And what happens? Since you've been on the CRPC committee longer than I have, and you've seen whatever data presented, what happens if the select board has not met their statutory requirement to fully inform us of the tax and fiscal implications of this? Because that has not happened. We had a presentation with no data on financial and tax implications. So I'm not sure that fully informed is even on the same planet as what just happened.
I would love to advise you to contact your legal counsel for.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, there's.
I mean, when they considered last time that that if they go through this process last, they didn't, because I was on the board last year. And the tip was brought up last year, but then ultimately, because you reported to us, ultimately was never brought to us in a formal way, so they must have decided to end that conversation.
They did.
Yeah, and actually, I think Karen has the exact quote, um, probably at her fingertips. But yeah, so the town manager at the time, which is Alex Torby, um, had said that they weren't ready and that they weren't going through with it, um, at that point, because they needed to do more work on it. So that was last year. Also, that is a one that was TIP one point O, I'm calling it, right? So TIP one point O was just West Wheelock. Two point O is now the L shape.
Big change, yeah. Um, can we take Kari? Asmus's comment, can you move her over? She's in the public attendees. Thank you so much.
Ari, thanks for staying awake with us.
Yep, if you unmute yourself, you're good to go, Kari.
All right. Are you? How are you doing?
Yeah, Karen, we can't hear you if you're talking.
She's had troubles with this.
All right, I will suggest, um, if you I don't know if it's allowed, but if you want to send your comments to Kim, that would probably be or to me, that's fine too. Um, okay, so let me, yes.
I would just like to suggest, um. I would like to ask and then make a suggestion. My suggestion is just, I don't think we have to do the whereas, whereas, whereas. I don't think we have to say given that, given that each time.
Mm hmm. Um. I know, I tried to take that out and I couldn't figure it out.
Yeah, I prefer tidier statements.
Yes.
But I wonder whether the board thinks we should preface our remarks by saying that we are in support of efforts to improve the town pan over and under understand the need for sewage and hygiene utilities and everything.
Love that, but we would also, I think, want to encourage the select board to um proceed in a manner that's more transparent and timely, not only for us, a vested party in the discussion, but also the community, who if it took us this long to understand this process, there's no way the community is going to understand this process prior to town meetings, which is problematic deeply.
Yeah. Right. Yes.
And it's also not just us. It's, you know, it's the counties, they mentioned, it's the Howe Library, um, probably other people that I'm not aware of. And um, Kari believes she's ready to go.
Uh, but yeah, I hell, I I can't make my, I guess I can't make my, uh.
We can hear you. We can hear you. Go ahead.
Oh, you can. Okay, great. So uh, basically, I was agreeing with Kim's sentiment. Um, and I think that it is, um, because at the hearing on the fourteenth, they could change the language and say, yes, that we're willing to do fifty percent uh revenue sharing. Um, and I guess I don't want to put, oh, you know, words in your mouth, but um, I think that if you have the sentiment that the only way that you would agree to support this tip or or at least not oppose it would be that if there were the option for the school district to sort of quote unquote opt out or for there to, you know, one hundred percent revenue sharing with the school district. Um, that I I think that it's important that you make that distinction clear, that that is, uh, you know, i- that they could address everything else. But if that is not part of the deal, that I that it would, you know, it's up to you, whether you could accept it or not. Um, but I I think that um, that there would be many reasons why you you would say that you need to be made whole. Uh, and that otherwise, you know, you you don't have a dog in the hunt in terms of how the town earmarks its funds or how they, you know, plan to do the sidewalks, et cetera. Um, I guess the other thing that I didn't, since it just came up now, um, in terms of the town's compliance with RSAs, uh, our town manager did mention that we do not have the advisory group. But there are a number of other tip provisions, um, that the town has not been compliant with, and those include uh, having an android port, having a budget. Um, I'm trying to think, there was another uh thing as well. Um, so I agree with uh Ben that this is particularly bothersome then that they have a tip. They've been aware for at least a year, because I spoke to them about this, about how they are not compliant in a number of ways. They haven't reformed any of them in the past year, and now they're starting a new tip and they're also not compliant. And um, as Kim said, you know, that I think that the only way at this point uh that they would start to pay attention to the statutes is if they were compelled to. Um, and um, I don't know that anybody really wants to go down that road. So that is sort of another reason. Oh, I remember now. The the fourth thing is that um, we have heard time and again that if there's anything to be changed by uh, the parameters of the TIF and there is flexibility, that all you have to go to town do is go to town meeting. And, you know, within the past two, three years, the amount of the captured value has changed. Did they go to town meeting? And so actually, right now, with the current tip that we have, it's a very small tip. Uh, the schools, uh, tax rate, if we didn't have that tip, would be two cents lower than it is. You know, so you you're already sort of making a contribution to the good of the town, shall we say. Um, but uh, the the captured value increased. It did not go to town meeting, so um, they're saying they would go to town meeting in the in the future, but they haven't in the very recent past. So a- again, I just think that on principle, that unless the school district is made whole, you know, you're in um, a good space to say that that is the only condition under which you would support this. And that's my comment. Thank you so much.
Yep, Kim has something to say. Go ahead.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you, Karen, sir.
So I oh, so th- this is another just data point for you to feel like, well, does the school have the right to say we've been made whole? This parking tip, which by the way, delivers zero students to the school, the district, right? The parking garage, right? It was just the parking garage and a very small other little piece of land, but that's um, that, you know, there there's no like revenue sharing on that front, right? So it's like, well, why, why bother now, right? And actually, this concept of revenue sharing, when the school district, when the town has done an action and then the school district has lost revenue from it, um, there's actually been something like that in the past. So our water, um, I keep forgetting how to say this.
Water treatment.
Water treatment facility, right, was was actually more of a privately owned, which paid school taxes, right? And then the town, for whatever reason, um, bought the and they basically municipalized that. Still to this day, the town pays the school, the school portion of what would have been delivered from the private company. So there's there's just an example right there saying we've had history of making the schools whole, so it's not like inconceivable. Other tips have done this. Um, and actually, the primary purpose of this tip, unlike the parking garage, right, is to increase residential property. And um, so I think that there's just so many different factors, which is why I go back to saying that tip is just not the right tool for this. But if you are going to do tip, um, it would be, I think, in everyone's benefit for the school districts to pop out.
So, okay, I have a new proposal.
I have one thing to say.
Yes, please, I'm sorry.
We're going to say something collaborative, cooperative with the select board. I hesitate to say that, you know, we could do anything except for be kept full because we just have had no data to review. We don't know how much money is involved. We have no projections. We can't, I think, talk about that level of granularity without any numbers on the table. So all we can say is just carve us out.
You know, being a poll means.
Can I read this?
It carve us out. So instead of uh us not getting our sixty six percent share of the standard uh tax uh revenue from that district, we would just continue to get that and then they could play with the rest. Is that not?
Yeah, so. I know, I.
You said the name and right away.
Um, so. So the uh ba- basically, when when you think about one, and it's easy to think about the school district math when we present the slides, I'm saying, oh, we've now calculated our tax rate. So we have the tax rates. How much does the schools need as far as what our budget is, right? How much are we going to need to raise from taxpayers? And then the denominator number is basically the value that we can tax within the town. And so what we're saying is when the school opts out, we get to include all of the normal existing value, which would, you know, flow with what, whatever, if it gets revalued, whatever, whatever that total denominator number is. If we weren't to be cut out and the tip would pass, as is suggested, right, and the school district wouldn't receive anything, the math of that, we'd still have our, obviously, whatever our budget is. And then the denominator would be whatever the town total value is, less Wheelock and Main Street. Um, and so basically, that would be the calculation. The town, however, would have different, a different denominator, because they would see themselves, you know, that that they might have a different denominator if they decided to revenue share or whatever. But basically, when we do our math, when we submit our financial reports to the state, that's how we would calculate it. So. So it is a hundred percent revenue sharing, right? When you think about it, but it's just basically saying our piece of the pie is all of it versus a portion cut out.
Uh huh, right. Can I read my motion language? Um, so move to adopt the following statement and to authorize Tara Veloso and Deb Nelson to speak on behalf of the Hanover School Board at the April seventeenth Hanover Select Board Warrant Article Hearing. I don't know if I have that right, but we can amend that. Um, given the absence of data about, and this is our statement, given the absence of data about the concrete impact to the tax rate, the lack of an end date, the lack of a currently proposed bond, the failure to meet the statutory requirements of RSA one six two K dot four nine, and our concerns about the detrimental impact on school budgets, the Hanover School Board does not support the adoption of proposed Main and West Relentive District Reference in Article ten. If a mechanism exists to make the school district whole or to carve us out from the TIP limitations with data to demonstrate that revenue sharing, we would be willing to join that discussion. Does that capture what we've said?
I think we've taken a neutral position on the creation of the tip.
I'm sorry, Tara, what just?
I think we've said the words I heard were we would take a neutral position on creation of the tip.
Okay.
In that case.
Yep, at the end, okay. Yep.
In terms of words, I think I would also add, and the two thousand twenty five County Panover Annual Meeting. As a, as a, like, it it may not get to that point, but I want to be clear. I will point out to the board. Um, we do not have another scheduled Hanover meeting until after town meeting. The day after town meeting.
Oh, gosh.
There is a Dresden one, but that is a wholesale report. And we, just to refer, we will probably have a similar conversation again for the members of Norwich to hear this, as I think they should. for the members of Norwich to hear this, as I think they should. And as the select board.
All four members then in that case, because I.
Yeah, so I just wanted, like, where we're going, the, the person available, can we, can those two people named be available both on?
Or can we just say?
Or can have a motion.
And.
True.
I will admit, I would imagine we can't speak for the Dresden Board. We can only speak for the Hanover Board.
That's true.
So this conversation will happen again on the twenty-second. But that, that person would not be participating on April fourteenth unless we actually have a special meeting, which we could technically do. But I'm not sure that would be in the testaments of everyone because of various reasons.
Gosh, we're all at town meeting now, because that's a lot of votes.
Yeah, we should all encourage everyone to be there. Even if we nominate one or two people to come to this next Monday, I would encourage all of us to be at that meeting.
No, I mean, town meeting, right? That's where you're going, right?
Hopeful in terms of.
Okay, so we have to somehow wrap this up, y'all, because it is ten forty now. We are setting new records. I, I don't know where we are in Robinson's.
So we have a motion.
We have a motion. I might suggest that we, at this point, withdraw that motion if you feel so inclined. And have someone read the new motion. Would that be acceptable?
Oh, that's fine.
Okay.
I thought we were tinkering it.
So you withdraw the motion.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
I can't vote.
Chair, I would like to make a new motion.
Yes, Ben.
I move to adopt the following statement and authorize board members Tara Veloso and Deb Nelson to speak on behalf of the Hanover School Board at the April seventeenth Hanover Select Board Warrant Article Hearing. And if necessary, at the two thousand twenty-five Town of Hanover Annual Meeting, to say the following. Given the absence of data about the concrete impact to the tax rate, the lack of an end date, the lack of a currently proposed bond, the failure to meet the statutory requirements of RSA one hundred sixty-two K colon nine, and our concerns about the detrimental impact on school budgets, the Hanover School Board does not support the adoption of the proposed Maine and West Wheelock TIP District Referenced in Article ten. If a mechanism exists to make the school district whole or to carve us out from the TIP limitations with data to demonstrate that revenue sharing, we would take a neutral position on the TIP.
Thank you, Ben. Is there a second?
One second.
All right, I'm gonna take Renee's second.
Suspicious safety.
Seconded by Renee.
All in favor? Oh, sorry, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? All right, good job, guys. Thank you so much. Kim, Kari, thank you for your contributions as well. Uh, yes, that was unanimous, including Renee. Are there any other public comments on this? Okay, closing business requiring action. I will make sure that that gets to Ryanne and for the minutes.
Very, very good.
All right, we can hear.
Kari, you are not your, please mute yourself.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. So I was just, did, did your motion say April seventeenth was the meeting or April fourteenth? And it probably doesn't really matter. But otherwise, you know, good job.
Thank you very much. I might have said April seventeenth, that's my bad, so thank you. We will, that's, you know.
Yeah, that's a screener's, that's a screener's error that can be corrected.
Okay, thank you very much for catching that, April fourteenth.
We should tell Ryanne to mute the show up to town.
Yeah, I will add that. All right, board to the chair. I don't have anything. Please, please come to meetings. Welcome, Renee, we're thrilled to have you. Thank you again to everyone who submitted their candidacy. The CIPC, well, it's, it's not that, actually, it's the Finance Committee is meeting this week. So we do need a finance, someone to attend the Finance Committee meeting on Thursday. At what time, I want to say it was ten o'clock, but I will.
Five P M.
Five P M. I think, I don't remember, I'm so sorry.
It is five P M. In the, in the, at the Black.
The virtual?
No.
I have to up here. Okay, so you will go. What, what I, so I will say to all board members. Yeah, let me talk about the tip, I'm sure, right? I will say to all board members, we will look, as chairs again, look at the distribution that we have a new board member and make sure that the committee assignments and liaison assignments all make sense. So we will find a time to do that and make sure that it's shared equitably. And then I would encourage us to step on as alternates because whether it's Tara or Renee, for example, representing us on the Finance Committee, there are going to be times that you guys have conflicts individually. And I, we can all step in, but it would be great to have sort of a steady alternate plan for some of those committees that are more time consuming. Okay, that is all I have. I will just put a plug in to, again, attend, you know, leaning on some of these meetings. I think these are some really important things. I'm grateful to everyone for taking the time to understand this. And yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Because I think I, it's really unclear what emails I missed in that first one. Was there an email that went out with the list of committees in terms of when they meet and things like that?
No, when they meet, no.
Okay.
No, so I, that's a great suggestion.
And I know they didn't notify.
Yeah, that's a great suggestion. I will try to pull something like that together for, for you, for Gina as well, and for Renee, for our newer board members. Yeah.
And I'll, I'll add that depending on the committee, board members have involvement in the schedule. If it is a board-led, for example, policy, which means at eight thirty tomorrow morning, is directed by the, the schedules of the board members and the chair. But other things like the Finance Committee, where we are one member of many, that is not one where we dictate the schedule.
And CIPC tends to be morning meetings. So that might be a better, and that's usually more like ten A M. So that might be a better fit, so we can talk about that. Okay, done. Committees, I don't think we have any, right?
Right.
Okay, just finance, maybe we've talked a lot about all that stuff. So I think we're good on that.
And I'm, Jay, clarify for Renee, for Ryanne, say what the plan is for the Finance Committee.
Uh, once I figure that out, I will, yes. I will send emails. I'm gonna move on to Jay, super tense report.
I have a lot, so.
Perfect. I was hoping you would say that.
Actually, I don't. I do want to report that our attorney from the ACLU, who the board agreed to enter into a lawsuit against the U S Department of Education last evening, had their temporary restraining order hearing and it was rendered moot because the Department of Ed backed off and said that nothing will happen to any district until after April twenty-fourth. And we anticipate that the hearing on the preliminary injunction, which is the, basically the lawsuit, will, will happen before April twenty-fourth. So I met for a couple of hours today with counsel and, you know, honored the board's directive to work with them to move forward. Another thing that the board should be aware of is that we are going to be switching over from Board Docs to a program called Simbli. We have already opened up the strategic planning function within there. And I think that you're going to be really pleased with how comprehensive but simple to use and understand it is. Right now, just Ryanne and Catherine and I are working with it to get it populated with our existing strategic plan. And we'll be training principals next so that they and other first line users will understand how to use it. It's, it's more intuitive and easier to use than Board Docs and less expensive. So I'll end it there.
Assembly, what was, what was it called?
Simbli, S I M B L I. That's being used right now by the New Hampshire School Board Association and a couple of other districts in the state. And I anticipate there'll be a lot more soon.
And, and it was developed by a school board, as my understanding, rather than external source.
Okay, other questions for Jay? All right, thank you so much. Robin stuck it out.
I'm still here.
You are, you are a warrior, job.
So I did submit my report, but along with the report, I submitted our general grant assurances. And I present these each year for our new board members, especially who have not heard about these. These are just our, for our title grants, Title One, Title Two, and Title Four. And each year, we just have to sign the assurances that we will follow the rules of the grants, that we are provided with this money and they're spent in certain ways for Title One and Title Two and Title Four. And I'm happy to answer any questions about my report or about the grant assurances.
Thank you, Robin. Other questions for Robin? Robin, I have a question for you. Ben just very kindly pointed out that our business requiring action did not include the nurse pay. I assume we wanted to vote on that, is that correct?
We haven't presented Dresden yet. So that will go to Dresden next on the twenty-second.
Is there any urgency to vote on it tonight?
Should we support it so that we're not in the gutter?
Well, given that Norwich has already indicated verbally that they intend to support it, I can't imagine that Dresden would not support it. I don't think it would hurt if you made a motion.
Okay. Yeah. All right, we'll come back to that perhaps after the Business Administrator's report. Don't let me forget that. Thank you, guys. Anything else for Robin? Okay, Business Administrator's report?
Um, I do submit a report and I'm just kind of highlighting some of the things that have been going on regarding, you know, winding down, asking for requisition tie-up. And so that we can start winding down purchases and everything else. Teacher contracts did go out. They should be April eleven was the deadline to have them signed, returned. Food service, I've been stuck, Trevor, just kind of get a feel of how things have been going with the food service program. And I just kind of basically put down, you know, what we had heard, you know, relayed back to me and everything else. And then I reached out, told me to, I remember him, about projects that are going on here. And I know that they've been doing projectors with fifteen classrooms. And he said at this point, they have six more, and given they should be done next week. Other than that, there's no other projects right now till the end of school. And then I have some summer, we'll probably have that later.
Hey. I have a quick question for you. You mentioned teacher contracts. Do we know when support staff contracts go out? Is that imminent?
When I was talking to Amy today about that, she said that until they should wait on some more documents or something. And then once they get out, when she gets those, then she can start generating them.
Okay, so those are in the works.
Yeah, they're definitely in the works and everything else.
Okay, great. Other questions for Teresa? Hey, I'm just.
I'd like to go back on the time to tuition thing.
Great.
I think there's some confusion, that's why I was thinking that next time around that we were gonna kind of bring that was because when we were talking in the committee meetings, we were really honing in on Dresden, but we weren't talking about doing.
Same thing in progress.
Right, and I don't know that we said the word Hanover School District, but we said it'd be nice if we could get this under one formula and have all the districts of this side of the river.
Right.
Use that same concept. And I think that that's where we landed at that. And that's why I was not expecting to, to do that tonight.
That's fair. I think we just need to double check the deadline. We have a Dresden meeting coming if we need to do a quick tuition, yeah.
Jay's already texted me and said that we're fine to do it in May.
Perfect, love that, okay. Awesome, thank you, guys. So note to our note taker to please put that on the May agenda.
We certainly don't have any anticipated tuition and students either.
Okay.
For Hanover, for our school.
So it's just meaning that legal requirement, okay. Excellent, before we move on to public comments, we'll just cycle back to business required action and take a vote on the nurse pay, yes, ma'am?
Do we need to take a vote on the personnel matter that we talked about in our public?
It was in, that was in our list.
Okay, okay.
That was the, the nomination piece, so that was in there.
All right.
As, as part of our, yeah, thank you. Reasonable to check that. So I will take a motion to increase the nurse pay as presented in the discussion item. I think we can do that, right?
Did she have a specific number?
She did have specific numbers.
Three hundred dollars per day.
Three, two, three hundred dollars per day, that would be good in the motion. If someone feels up to making that motion to increase nurse pay to three hundred dollars per day. Substitute nurse pay.
I move to support, or.
Increase.
Increase to increase substitute nurse pay to three hundred dollars per day.
As presented.
As presented.
Second by Tara, all in favor? Show of hands. Brilliant, that is unanimous, thank you, guys. Last opportunity for public comments this evening.
Please raise your hands on Zoom if you wish to speak.
Nope, seeing none, okay, closing public comments. We have many agenda items for next meeting. If you have anything else, please send them my way. Our next meeting is Wednesday, May fourteenth, which is the day after town meeting, if I'm not mistaken, right? Okay, so we will have some things to discuss, I'm sure, on that front as well. Hopefully, I will see you all at town meeting and I will see you at Dresden. So I'll take a motion to adjourn. Yeah, Ben.
Move to adjourn the meeting at ten thirty-two P M.
Second. Ben, roll call votes during Tara. You just say your name and yes, yeah, very good.
DeBosse, yes.
Tina, yes.
Nelson, yes. Russell, yes. McCotto, yes, thank you.
I don't think we've.